Everyone, good evening. I want to call the Warwick City Council Finance Committee to order. The time is...
Call the Finance Committee to order.
The time is 5:03. First on our agenda is acceptance of the minutes from the committee meeting held on January 27th. Do I have a motion? I have a motion. I have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next, we have the acceptance of the minutes for the consent calendar. I need a motion.
So moved.
I have a motion. I need a second.
Sign.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. We have zero items before us this evening that are above the $50,000. We do have four that are under the $50,000. With that said, I would ask if there's any members of the committee would like to have any items pulled? Any members of the city council would like to have any items pulled from the bid package? Do we have any items from... or any members of the public have any questions or would like to have any items pulled for questions in the bid package? I had just a couple of questions on the LifePak 35 items, the batteries, and I spoke to the deputy chief on that earlier today. And what I was told was that with these batteries that we get, which we use to charge in the vehicles, they don't come with chargers. So we can't charge them like in the office or in the station or anything like that. So in order to keep the spare batteries charged and ready to roll, we need to purchase these chargers to do that. And, you know, as you all know, I kind of squeeze every nickel and dime that I can, and I had to agree with the explanation on that. So, anything else? Any other members of the public have any questions or concerns? Okay. Hearing none, I need a motion.
Move favorable action.
We have a motion for favorable. We have a second.
Second.
We have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next item will be number 2025-364. Which one did I skip? Oh, okay, sorry. Will be PCO 15-24, an ordinance clarifying the rehiring of municipal retirees on a limited basis without interrupting pension benefits. That is sponsored by Councilman Sinapi on behalf of Mayor Pocozzi. This is for second passage. Any questions from members of the committee?
No.
Any questions or comments from members of the council? Chief of Staff, do you have any comments? No comments from the chief as well. Do we have any comments or questions from members of the public? Any comments or questions from members of the public? Hearing none, I will need a motion.
Motion move favorable action.
Second.
We have a motion. We have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, now moving on to 2025-364. So... Oh, that's right, I'm sorry. Okay. Yeah, we're done. We are done. This is going to be the fastest meeting of the night, I can assure you of that. Okay, motion adjourned?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. I'm sorry. 5:08. Thank you.
Next up this evening will be the Intergovernmental Committee, but that committee cannot begin until 5:00 PM. So we will reconvene the next committee, the Intergovernmental Committee, at 5:50 PM.
Good evening. Time is 5:50, and the Intergovernmental and Appointments Committee comes to order. I know we've got a lot of business before the committee and the council tonight. This committee also has a fair amount of business. We're going to try to get the quick items done first, then we're going to move on to... as long as there's no concerns from other members of the committee, we'll get PCR 2325 off of our plates. And then we will close with, I think, the reason that most folks are here in the room today, PCR 1515. Is that acceptable for everyone? All right, so kicking it off, first, we have acceptance of the minutes from the committee meeting held on October 7th, 2024, actually, so...
Motion move favorable.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Acceptance of the minutes from the committee meeting held on January 13th, 2025.
Motion move favorable.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And acceptance of the minutes from the committee meeting held on January 22nd, 2025.
Motion move favorable.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, excellent. So, first up, we have a reappointment to the Board of Canvassers, Edward Murphy. Mr. Murphy's CV and appointment memo are included in everyone's paperwork. Do any members of the committee have any questions or comments on the reappointment of Mr. Murphy to the Board of Canvassers?
None.
No. No questions from the committee. Any questions from members of the council? Councilman Lattiser?
Thank you, Chairman. No questions. I just want to comment on Mr. Murphy. I've known him for a very, very long time, just an honorable gentleman, successful businessperson here in the city, and has done an exceptional job with the Board of Canvassers. Very active, particularly during election time when there has been occasions to have to reach out to him. He's just a great job in that position, and I'm very happy to support him. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman. Any other members of the council wish to offer any testimony on Mr. Murphy's appointment? Seeing none, any members of the public have anything to add on Mr. Murphy's appointment? Members of the public? Seeing none, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Right, turning the page. We have three new members being appointed to the land trust. I've spoken with the chair of the land trust, also with the city council solicitor. So our rules require that new appointees to any board or commission that come before this honorable body be present for their initial appointment, should members have questions or comments. Two of our appointees for this evening unfortunately are not able to be here due to other conflicts. So we are going to move to hold on both of those. So let's take care of that first. So first up is Ms. Arlene Nappa. Councilman DeLuise, could I have a motion to hold this to our next meeting?
I'll make a motion to hold that to the next meeting.
Thank you. And all in favor?
Aye.
That'd be Ward 3. We'll do the same thing for the next one, A.J. Pandey. Do I have a motion, Councilman, to hold?
I'll make a motion to hold.
Okay.
Second.
All right, and a vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, 4-0 to hold to our next meeting. Somebody have the date handy for our next meeting? 24th? All right, February 24th. Okay, next up, Tyler... oh, boy. Tyler Mecath. Tyler? With the chairwoman of the land trust. Tyler, thank you so much. Thank you so much for coming tonight. Jane, thank you for accompanying him. Tyler, you want to say anything about your interest in serving on the Warwick Land Trust?
Hi, yeah, I'm Tyler Mecath. I live in Ward 5 in Warwick, and I'm pleased to be considered for the land trust committee tonight. I've lived in Warwick since 2021, and I work in land conservation professionally, also serve on the board of the Rhode Island Land Trust Council, and I look forward to helping the city in its land conservation goals.
Thank you very much for your service thus far on the state land trust commission, and we look forward to having you on the city's land trust. Any members of the committee have any questions or comments for Mr. Mecath?
No.
Any members of the council? Councilman Lattiser?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to just extend my appreciation to Mr. Mecath for stepping up to the plate to serve on this commission. Admittedly, I do not know you well, but your resume more than speaks for itself. You are extremely competent to be on this board, and your experience is so welcome and so needed. The recommendation from Chairwoman Austin on your behalf also carried a lot of weight with me, so I would like to thank you for reaching out and volunteering to serve on this very important commission. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Thank you, Councilman. Anyone else? Any other members of the council wish to offer any comments?
No.
Members of the public? Jane, you're welcome at this time, if you like.
Yes, I just want to thank you very much for taking Tyler's nomination under consideration. I'm sorry that our other two members had a conflict tonight because we're very excited about building up our strength as a land trust. So we will be back here in two weeks with two more members, and I would also mention that we still have room in Wards 3, 6, and 9... or no, 3 and 9, to help fill out our ranks. And it's extremely valuable from the standpoint of your own ward to have someone who knows your own community, is in connection with your neighborhood groups, knows what the natural resources are. So we look forward to having our numbers increase. So, thank you.
Excellent. Thank you so much, Ms. Austin. We appreciate your testimony tonight. Any other members of the public have anything to add? Okay, seeing none, do I have a motion?
Motion to move for a favorable appointment.
Second.
Thank you. Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Favorable action. Welcome to the land trust. All right, at this point, we're going to shuffle to the last item on our docket if there are no objections. This is a resolution requesting the General Assembly to consider adopting policies authorizing municipalities to contract with the Rhode Island Department of Transportation to perform minor routine maintenance work on state roads. This is Council President Sinapi. Oh, you are correct. I missed an appointment. Bottom of the page. All right, last up for appointments tonight is for our municipal court judge, cannot leave her off, the Honorable Kelly McElroy. Similar to the others, paperwork is in your packet as well as her impressive credentials, and I think her service to the city speaks for itself over the past several years. She's incredible to work with. Any members of the committee have any questions or comments on Ms. McElroy's appointment, Okay, hearing none. Any members of the council?
Yes, I'd just like to briefly thank Judge McElroy for continuing to serve. It's a difficult position, but very important for Warwick and its residents. Really, I've heard nothing but good things about her service on the municipal court. It's not an easy job to have all of that balance because really, the purpose, the reason why we have a municipal court in the first place is to try to make things a little bit more convenient for residents rather than have everybody sent on down to the district court, have hearings ideally at times that are a bit more ideal. But oftentimes, the job does involve enforcing the law in a way that the particular resident who's in front of the municipal court isn't necessarily going to be happy about how the law is being enforced. The key is that as long as everyone is being treated with respect, having the opportunity to be heard, that's key. So that's my brief comments on that position, and I think that Kelly McElroy is doing a fantastic job in that position. I would also just, one brief aside here, I actually just noticed this as I was double-checking the agenda. I saw that the appointment is... it looks like the term is slated to be up as of October 1, 2027. The code of ordinances specifies that it be a term of three years from the date of appointment. So that's an item that I just wanted to have noted on the record. I'm not sure if the reappointment technically went through on October 1st, but when it comes to the length of the term, wanted to make sure to mention that. Thank you.
Thank you for your diligence, Councilman. Do we need to make any sort of amendment here?
No. We do not.
Further, clerk, the term expired, so it's to continue in that timeline, so it's including the time that has occurred since her last appointment had expired.
Does that make sense, Councilman?
I can see that. I think that as a more technical matter, it really should be three years from the date that the appointment actually comes through with the holdover period not necessarily held. However, it's between October 2027 and February 2028. It's not exactly an election year or anything of that nature, so I don't see any issue there.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other members of the council? Members of the public? Anyone wish to comment on Judge McElroy's reappointment? One once. Hearing none, do I have a motion to approve Judge McElroy's renewed term?
Motion to approve favorable action.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay. Moving back to PCR 2325. This is a resolution requesting the GA to consider adopting policies for municipalities to contract with the Rhode Island DOT. Council President Sinapi?
So this mirrors a law in Pennsylvania. The purpose is to hopefully help address some of the issues we see every day and run into every day, especially with constituent concerns, when there's an issue on a state road in one of our wards, and a constituent rightly says, hey, can you get X, Y, Z fixed? And we're stuck simply pointing them towards the state, and the state, obviously, has dominion over a large amount of land that they have to worry about, and they have a lot of projects. So what they are able to get to is not necessarily what anyone would define as in a timely manner. This, in theory, would allow the city to ask the state, hey, there's X, Y, Z problem. We can fix it. We can get it addressed. Please just reimburse us. And if the state says yes, then we can go forward to do that and get reimbursed. So it's really that straightforward. As far as if whether or not the state will be on board with this, that I can't tell you because I don't know. I'm hoping they will be, and even if they're not okay with the language as written, that they will be open to doing it a different way because obviously there are other ways you could potentially do this. The only reason why I present it the language as it stands is because there's another state that already currently actively does this and does so successfully. That's why the language is as it stands.
Thank you, Council President. This seems like common sense, good government. Can I assume you've discussed this with DPW or Highway or the administration in some way?
Yes, and the concern is similar to what I just raised as far as will the state actually be on board with doing it? And I've honestly been mentioning this legislation for years and wanting to do it, and I finally found a state that already did, which makes everything in theory much easier because one of the big concerns often at the General Assembly is how are we going to do X, Y, Z? It's never been done. This thankfully has been done and apparently done well.
Okay, excellent. Is there any... I see in Point D, contained in the last line, line nine, contains in sections XXX. Do we need to do any housekeeping there, or is that to be...
So I'm leaving that up to the Legislature's Department at the General Assembly as far as how they want to handle it.
Okay, so where it would be located in state law, essentially?
Exactly. Because on our end, obviously, we're just passing a resolution saying we support this concept, this idea. Here's our suggestion. What they do with it in turn remains to be seen.
Okay. And this in no way would somehow, you know, push financial liability for maintaining roads which belong to the state onto the municipality. It'd be more of a, hey, this makes sense for us to do X, Y, Z and submit for reimbursement type of scenario?
Yes, and then as it's written, it's a case-by-case basis. Granted, if they... my suggestion in the long term would be that they do this, try it, hopefully like it, and then decide they want to expand the scope of it. Like Pennsylvania does other things where they have far more sweeping approaches so that you don't need to do it on every scenario, like for a snow removal, they have a way to do it differently. However, start small, so I figured we'd go with this version of it that they do. And as you notice, it also addresses liability as well. That way, we don't get stuck in trouble slash the state.
Okay, thank you, Council President. Any members of the committee? Councilman Nappa?
Council President, just one question. Was there any thought given to attaching a timeline of... for timely reimbursement? As we can imagine, the state may not be timely with reimbursing if we're taking money out of general fund or whoever are appropriating to do the repair. Was that mirrored? Was that language found in the Pennsylvania legislation for a period of time or just simply language just to indicate that we expect timely reimbursement?
So I went out of my way not to alter the language so that way no one at the General Assembly can say we're trying to reinvent the wheel or do it differently, and they can't say whether or not it will work. That being said, your concern is addressed by Subpart A, where for each project, it's not simply just a, hey, can you do this? And the other side saying, yeah, we can do it, or vice versa. It's a formal contract will be in there. So in that contract, timelines, et cetera, everything can be laid out accordingly.
Okay. Thank you. That's all.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other members of the committee? Members of the council? Seeing none, any members of the public have any comments or concerns on PCR 2325?
Yes, good evening. Michelle Comar, Ward 1. In concept, I think this is a great idea. Sometimes state work is kind of slow, and there's a pothole to be fixed or a sign that fell down, and we can take care of it. My concern would be we can't keep up with our own potholes in the city, and the Claims Committee knows this well because people come in here with claims all the time. We can't keep up with the repaving of our roadways, and now we want to take on state roadways. I do not want to see any more debt taken on by the taxpayers to repair state roadways. We have debt and bonds that we'll put together to repair local Warwick roadways. So that would be a concern of mine. The other concern is about the liability. Let's say, for instance, City of Warwick, under this agreement, fixes a pothole, and it pops open right away. It's not compacted. Who's liable for it? Does the person that was injured, car damaged, file a claim with the state or with the city? That's a big issue that I see needs to be worked out. And the last thing is, the council is aware that the City of Warwick, just like all municipalities in the state, put together a priority list for DOT. I don't know how often they do it, every year. It's called a TIP, Transportation Improvement Program. You pick out which roads, state roads, you really feel need to be worked on. And that's our real mechanism for the long term of getting roads fixed instead of patching over state roads that pop up or the seam between two coats pops up and creates potholes. So those are my concerns here. I know the Council President explained it's been adopted by a state, but I see problems, and I see more debt taken on by the City of Warwick taxpayers. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Comar. Any other members of the public have any comments to make? Last chance. All right, seeing none, do we have a motion?
Motion move favorable action.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. 4-0, motion carries, favorable action. Okay. Now we are to the meat of the work before this committee, which is PCR 15-25. This is a resolution to the General Assembly requesting authorization of a special election of the voters of the city to revoke authority for further issuances and indebtedness pursuant to the $350 million authorization for the construction of two new high schools. This is submitted by Councilman Lattiser, and this is our first hearing on this resolution. Councilman, I'll give you the option if you'd like to say your piece now or when I come around to the rest of the council, your discretion.
I will hold my comments until after I hear from my colleagues and members of the public, but I will say I am the prime sponsor of this legislation. Obviously, I am in 100% support of it. The legislation in itself does not... The legislation in itself does not stop the two schools. What it simply does is sends a request to the General Assembly for their permission to put this on a special election ballot to be voted on by the members of the City of Warwick. And I'll hold back on my other comments until I've heard from everyone else.
Thank you, Councilman. Okay, so we're being asked to consider tonight a special election to stop the construction of the high schools, which have already gone to an election of the citizens of Warwick who overwhelmingly supported it. We've got members of the school committee, administration, the building team, all here and actively not working on the schools. But we will hear from them should they have anything to add. We also have members of the public. I want to make sure that every member of the public is heard on this, that their voice be heard by the members of the committee and of the council. I'm going to go around briefly to the members of the committee and the council if they have any opening remarks. We're going to treat this somewhat like a public hearing. So after we do brief remarks amongst my colleagues, I will open it up. So members who would like to speak in favor of this proposal may come up to the mic first, followed by members, I'll call it out separately, members who are in opposition to this proposal. And we'll run through those until we've exhausted everyone who'd like to speak. What I would say is this evening, there's a lot of business before the council. We have several public hearings for which we've hired a stenographer. There's folks with, excuse me, development projects. So we are bound by state law to go through that process. And so the stenographer will arrive around seven, which is when we begin our council meeting. We also have executive session tonight where we have outside legal coming to speak with us about certain matters. So we do have several events happening at seven o'clock. My goal here would be for as much of the public comment to happen before seven o'clock as humanly possible because I would feel bad for folks who have come down here and sacrificed their night to be stuck waiting for the council to conclude the time sensitive business before we come back out here. Do any members of the committee want to make any brief remarks? Oh, I'm sorry. One more thing on the public comment. When you come up in your group of in support or in opposition, just noting that we have about 45 minutes before some of those events kickoff. If someone said what you wanted to say, you know, by all means, come up. But you can say, you know, they articulated what I would like to say, or I agree with them. Or you can raise your hand when they say and say, I think that way too. But we want to get as many voices heard, not discouraging anyone from speaking. But let's make sure we can get through this. So any members of the committee have anything to add?
Mr. Chairman, I do have one question on procedure, please. May I? So when we get to seven o'clock, if we have not completed the public comment and I have not delivered my full presentation, we will adjourn into the regular meeting. Once we get through the pledge and the other items, are you going to return right back to this item?
My understanding is that due to the timeliness nature of having the stenographer coming and having outside counsel here to visit with us, that we will take care of those two items and then come back to this committee.
So with that said, then anticipating what I think is going to happen, I'm going to request that I be allowed to make my comments at 10 minutes to seven. If this isn't going, to hold this until the general public has an opportunity to continue voicing their opinions till 11 o'clock is ridiculous.
Thank you, Councilman. Let's get into, let's do, so did we have any members of the committee who wanted to add anything?
I will, but later I'll let the public do that.
Any members of the council before we get started? I'd like to get to the public as soon as possible. All right, so let's start with public comment. Any members who would like to speak in favor of PCR 15-25? This would be in favor of sending a resolution to the General Assembly to revoke authority on building the new high schools, please step to the podium.
I'm not speaking in favor of debts, but we have a presentation. Excuse me? Am I not? No. The committee will recognize you as a speaker and not personal speaker, and of course, it's our role. Excuse me, my apologies.
Just to help you out. If you go on our, there's dockets over there. But essentially, what's before us tonight is a resolution to the General Assembly asking them to put a ballot measure on the ballot to stop building the high schools.
Without any pretext about timeline and stuff like that, how can we speak in favor of debts?
I have to hold you there. If you go on the city council website, you will see the related documents there. You can pull that up on your phone. Please state your name and where you're from.
Good evening, council. Michelle Comar, Ward 1 in Warwick. I'm in favor of this resolution. I really think it's necessary. But I also think there's another mechanism to achieve the same thing. And I'd like to open with questions, two questions to the school department, if they're here. If not, the school committee. And one question, Chair, is what is the overrun, the shortcoming now over the $350 million?
As of today?
As of today. Because the last time we met at city council on the special meeting on January 22nd, it was 37.8 million. And then the answer was given at that meeting, but I think people might want to hear it again. Who pays for the $350 million bond? That includes the interest, the construction, engineering, supplying the schools with materials and furniture. Who pays for that and who sets the schedule that fits our budget to pay back the debt so that taxpayers are not burdened to the extent that they can't pay their tax bills? Thank you. Those questions first, please.
So the chairman has stepped up. Just in terms of the testimony tonight, if we can avoid relitigating the entirety of the basis for the schools, we can absolutely get an update on where things stand today. And I think the chairman's ready and prepared to answer those questions. So I'm going to direct him to do so now. Do you have any other questions?
Those are the questions, and those questions will help me for my last comments. Thank you.
Chairman.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the council. The number is 23 million estimated, and 17 million of that is still contingency.
So, Chairman, you're stating that as of today, the project is forecasted to be over budget by $23 million?
Correct.
And you still have 17,17?
Yes.
Million in reserve in contingency in the project?
Correct.
Okay. And to the speaker's second question, to Ms. Comar's second question, who pays for the $350 million bond?
I believe the taxpayers.
I think that's an accurate answer.
Thank you.
Ms. Comar.
Yes, thank you. And the other part of that question was, who decides on how much debt and what rate we pay back? And again, this answer was given at the other meeting, but I think everybody would like to hear about it.
The duration of the payback period of the bond?
Who dictates that?
Can I? Of the $350 million loan or bond, 178 million of that is reimbursed on the principal. Excuse me, 174, 174 million. My apologies.
All right, let's get to Ms. Comar's second question, sorry, third question, which is about or the determination on the payback period, which I believe is a city matter. So Chief, I don't know if you want to speak to that?
You're not the mayor. Don't send the chief staff. So right now, they're 20-year bonds. The interest rate is at the time of sale. So we haven't sold those bonds, so.
Okay.
So we don't, when you sell the bonds, that's when the interest rate is determined, what the repayment rate is.
But my point being is the city side, not the school department, correct, dictates how those monies or taxpayers' monies are spent to pay back the school debt.
I believe that to be true, and I think the chief can just confirm.
So the mayor authorizes the spending, the issuance of the bonds, the sale of the bonds.
Okay. Thank you. So that figure that we were just given, 174 million, is being reimbursed. And the bonds haven't been issued. How do we know that figure? Because in the bond referendum, it was a minimum of 45% reimbursement.
So we could get an expert to answer that question, but I believe there's an MOU between the district and RIDE where the reimbursement is agreed upon. I'm getting a lot of nodding heads, so I think I've.
We're just figuring it's going to be around that. We haven't, the bonds haven't been released yet.
The bonds haven't been released yet, but the MOU has been signed between the district and RIDE authorizing reimbursement of that amount.
Okay, thank you. Got it. All right, so you can see how much the school deficit, the school debt for these bonds is going to affect taxpayers and the city budget as well. And I think that the taxpayers were just expecting $350 million. And actually, I was in the voting booth and I took a picture of the question in the ballot box. And in there, it says, "An act authorizing the City of Warwick to issue not to exceed $350 million general obligation bonds, notes, and other evidences of indebtedness to finance the construction, blah, 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 blah," you know, put the school all together. I'll stop there because I want to emphasize and not to exceed $350 million general obligation bonds, notes, and other evidences of indebtedness to finance the construction of these two new schools to replace the old schools. How are we going to make up? How the school department proposing to make up, which we now found is, what, $23 million?
That's what the chairman just stated.
Or what is it? I'm sorry?
23, that's what the chairman stated.
23, right. How are we going to finance that 23? Because what the taxpayer signed on to is no other indebtedness. So they can't go out and borrow more money because that's on the taxpayer to pay back that loan. And then I think that violates, I want to use the word violate, it's pretty strong, what the voters signed on to. And I think the resolution is great. But if the school department takes out, or the city has to take out any more debt over and exceeding that $350,000, I think they're in trouble. They haven't followed what the General Assembly allowed them to put on the ballot in fairness to the taxpayers, because that was the safeguard. It didn't say, keep spending money and keep letting the taxpayers put in more money because you can't stick to your $350,000 original. I think all this has to do is, somebody has to stop this, whether it's the mayor, the city, the city council, or a judge to put an injunction. Because the school department right now, just based on what I've heard, cannot fit what the taxpayers signed on in the voting booths and approved, which was 350 million, it, that's it. Not to exceed it and not to take any more debt. We can't have Kate walks and make up $23 million. We're going to have to get another loan, and that's not allowable. I think that exceeds what the Warwick voters voted for. So I think there are other mechanisms, if the council hasn't asked the General Assembly, there are other mechanisms to stop this. We could do our own cleanup in-house and be reasonable about it, that there's more debt than what the voters voted for, and that's coming our way. And, you know, the numbers keep changing. They've changed, yes. One more minute, thank you. The numbers have changed over the budget deficit from nine million to something else. I mean, the numbers changed here for the school bond. They need, it was 27.8 just last month. Now it's 23. But really what bothers me is there's very little accountability demonstrated by, and I'll say the school committee because that's who I have contact with, where former chairs think, I have said it, meetings, the meeting in October, it's the mayor and the city council that fix the tax rate. It's their problem. It's like the school department, school committee have no effect on what taxpayers have to budget, both on their personal lives, how are they going to pay their taxes? So I really think the city, I'm asking the city, to do their best. If $350 million doesn't work, I'm sorry, you broke your, you broke your deal with the taxpayers that signed on to it. And the project should be stopped.
You're right.
I'll stop there. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Comar. Next up?
Rob Cody, Ward 7. Well, I really didn't want to come here to remind you people of certain facts, but now I feel compelled to do so. Exactly three years ago and three days, February 7, 2022, on the Zoom meeting, I told the entire city council, the school committee, and the building committee that you could not build these schools for $350 million. But you didn't listen. I went to numerous school department, school committee meetings and city council meetings, as you all recall. And I told everybody, being in the building of school, that's what I do, 30 years in that industry. I said, the bare minimum you will build these schools for is $382 million. And you didn't listen. And you postponed it on the school committee side. Mr. Tester held a third-party review, held it up for months, didn't tell anybody. And then the former city council president decides to pay $85,000 to Alana to do a third-party review, which held it up for six months. And they came back with $383 million for 85 grand. You know what everyone was lacking during this time? The ability to do fifth grade math. School committee, school department, city council, particularly the mayor's office as well. Simple mathematics that predicted this. But none of you listened. I've been in favor of building schools. I'm the one that came here 10 years ago screaming, don't put money into Warwick Vets. It should have been bulldozed into the ground in the 70s. Spent another, what, 80, 90 million into vets, blowing money. The key point of all this, and I want new schools, but what you said, and here's the act, chapter 5053, Local Acts, "An act authorizing the City of Warwick to issue not to exceed, not to exceed $350 million." That was what was sold to the taxpayers. Now, if the taxpayers want to spend 385 million, 400 million, I'm all for it. All right, I want new schools. But what I don't want is misrepresentations. And that's what's taken place since day one. Misrepresentations. We've knocked off 103,000 square feet from what these people have sold. Ms. Danbrook, and I love you to death, I tell you this all the time. Remember what you said? It's like buying one and getting one for free. Sure. If you don't take into consideration the juice we got to pay on the bond, sure. Let's make believe that doesn't exist, along with the $452 million of unfunded liabilities that we have for healthcare. healthcare, along with the 14% raises that you just gave everybody, along with the other bonds that we have outstanding. So let me ask you, since you're the chairman, Mr. Gepot, because I don't see anyone from the Finance Committee here, I don't see the mayor here. So this is a simple yes or no question, and really, I would like to hear a yes or no from every one of the council members. Based upon the debt that we have now, and we're going to build these two magnificent schools for however much it is, 350, 375, based on these, we had a meeting two weeks ago, that we had a special meeting for a $9 million deficit, and five days later, you gave away 14% raises. Can anybody tell me, yes or no question, when we compile all this, come July 1, who can tell me, and tell the rest of the taxpayers, what their tax rate will be? Do you know the answer to that? Simple question, yes or no? Do you know the answer to that?
I mean, I think it was...
It was a yes or no question.
No, I don't have a magic wand.
No. Mr. Napa, do you have the answer to that, yes or no? Mr. Muto, do you know? Well, I have questions for the council members. I have the right to ask every council member a question.
You can ask, you can ask your questions.
Be clear, this is a hearing, or rather, this is a committee meeting, which is currently discussing the topic of a resolution that is before us. It is not an interrogation of the city council, or any of its members as individuals. If you have questions or comments on the resolution, we both welcome them and look forward to hearing them. However, you should ask those questions and comments to those for which it is applicable. So, if you have a question as to what the impact on the tax rule will be, that is a question for the administration, and there are members of the administration here who could, in theory, address that for you. If they cannot, then I'm sure they will happily get an answer for you. However, if they do not, I highly recommend you reach out to your council person, so that they will get the answer for you. We're not going to turn this into a circus or a farce.
Well, this is not an interrogation, and I know several members of the audience that have reached out to all of their council members, and no one could give that answer. And, in fact, from Mr. Schaefer, we don't have that answer. The only thing that we had from Mr. Schaefer was, that based upon the school bond during the construction and the payback of the bond, he painted the picture stating that the city could either see a $2 million surplus, or a $35 million annual deficit during the cost of the bond. That's all he said. That's like the weatherman stating, tomorrow could be 90 degrees, but we could get a thousand-year blizzard. It's not being specific. And my point, and it's not an interrogation, Mr. Sinapi, is, can anybody intelligently tell the taxpayers of what they're going to be facing? And that's all I'm saying. I want you to build new schools, right? I'll be able to pay the taxes, but there's people that is very sensitive to the general public that have genuine concerns, and no one has addressed them to this date. We don't know what the, we don't know what the bond interest rate is. No one's talked about the 11.7 million-dollar bonding fee. We, we haven't compiled all this to give everyone an accurate representation of what the future holds for them in terms of liability to the city. That's my only point.
Mr. Cody, would you mind if I asked for a representative from the city to step up to the microphone?
I would love you to do that.
All right. Chief?
Gulf City Chief Staff. To answer Mr. Cody's question at this time, no, I cannot tell him what the tax rate will be July 1. We don't anticipate, if we do sell the bonds, we don't anticipate selling all the bonds during the year. It's, it's a progression of sale until we hit the $350 million sale.
And, and how long is the term of the bond that you're anticipating?
Through the chair, sir.
How long is the term of the bond that you're anticipating?
I believe we're anticipating 20-year bonds.
Okay. So as, as of this date, the city has no idea of what the projected tax rate will be?
Correct. There's a lot of assumptions, a lot of variables, and revenues, and...
The city has given a range, based on what could be expected in terms of bond issuances, bond, uh, interest rates, and a variety of other factors, but I'll leave it at that.
So, so we know two things for certain, that the taxes will not remain the same, and that the taxes will not go down. Is, is that accurate, or fair to say?
I can't comment on that, no.
That's all I got.
Thank you, Mr. Cody.
And so to illustrate for everyone, that's how this should go. If you have a question, rather than asking a council person, you should request that your question be asked at the administration. The administration provide an answer. It might not be the answer everybody wanted to hear, but it's an answer. Asking the council members about information that the administration's supposed to know doesn't do anyone any good.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Joyce Winstead Butler. I own Winstead's Mariner in Warwick Cove. I'm here, I'm deadly, I'm deathly against the building of the two new schools. They are not needed. They need just the schools that we have to be worked on. We don't have the money. We're in a financial mess right now. This was not planned, this bond, to allow for future timing, when the work would start. I know myself working, you have to have figures, based knowing that products are going to go up in price, and now we're in a mess. We don't have enough money for schools, and yet we're cutting back on all the necessities that these kids would need. I just don't think it's fair. And I just heard from the previous people speaking, taxes will go up again. So does that mean I've got to raise the, the rates on boat slips again? Does anybody else who owns a business in Warwick have to raise their rates because taxes are going up again? Because this was not figured ahead of time? I'm against it, absolutely. It has to go for revote. There's no doubt in my mind. And I've attended Warwick schools here, when Warwick Neck School first opened. I attended Vets 69, I graduated. Following year was the beginning of double sessions to build Tollgate. Tollgate's the last school to be built, and it's the first one to be torn down. Think about it.
Thank you, Ms. Butler.
It's not right. That's all I have to say. I am against it, and it should go for revote.
Thank you, Ms. Butler. Sir, state your name, and carry on.
Don Fife, Ward 1. Council President, members of the city council. I'm against the two new schools being built. Once, um, what was I going to say? When I was, I, I was in Warwick Veterans High School, when she mentioned, Warwick Vet was built in 1956. I graduated in 1961. At that time, we had 20,000 students in Warwick, in only one high school, Warwick Veterans High School. We had double sessions, as she mentioned. My homeroom was in the auditorium.
Pardon me, sir?
Pardon?
Can you just do the best to tie it back to, should we have a referendum on stopping the work on building the two new schools?
Why can't we renovate what we have, instead of building from, from scratch? Private industry does it. Johnston was going to build a new school, and they changed their mind, and they're going to re-renovate what they got. East Province stated too. Private industry does it, because it's cheaper. And the administration says it will cost the same. That's not true, because private industry renovates. They, like Market Basket, they bought Home Goods and renovated the building. Lockwood was bought, and they built an apartment building. It's cheaper. It's, in Warwick is $1 billion in debt, B with a big N. And we just can't afford it. Even the mayor, and it's quoted in the Warwick Beacon. And I'm going to quote what he said. He said, "People will be forced out of the homes because they can't afford the property taxes." And that was in the October issue of 2022. We don't need two new schools either, only one. And it was brought up right here in city council, that they wanted to build two, because the kids that are not going to have a new school will feel bad. Well, gee, that's, that's amazing. We can't afford, we can't afford it. Let them pay for it. And it should go for a new vote with the real price of the schools. Shortly after, shortly after the bond was passed, after the $350 million bond was passed, it was in the Warwick Beacon either one month or two months after, they said, the experts said, it would cost more like 400, 400 million instead of 350. And prices keep going up. Can't afford it. And now, well, 1961, we had 20,000 students in Warwick. Today, we got a little less than 8,000 students. Little less than 8,000 students. Those people left. And people say, "Well, if you build two new high schools, high tech, people will come." No. History will just repeat itself. People will leave. Taxes will be higher. You can't afford them now. I'm a senior citizen. What is senior citizens supposed to do? We can't even get veterans' discount raised, because it's been years, or senior citizens discount. And can you tell us what the property taxes will be when these schools are built? No, probably not. We keep asking, we don't get an answer. And we, Rhode Island's got problems. We, we can't build a bridge. We, we can't...
Sir, can, can you keep it to the two high schools? We've heard that we have a lot of debt. The mayor said people will be taxed out of their schools. We don't think we need two new schools, and we need to have a new vote. Any other themes that you want to make sure that we hear? I just want to make sure everyone else gets a chance to speak.
And they say, "Well, we can't, we can't renovate because RISE won't let us..."
I have renovate too, yes.
And who is, who is RISE? Why, do they, are they, are they with, all the schools? They tell all the schools, or just Warwick?
RIDE?
Yes.
RIDE, RIDE is the statewide body that...
Because, because Johnston is built, is going to renovate what they got. And now, they were going to build, they changed their mind. East Province renovated what they had. Why can't we? And, and, yeah. They say people will come. No, people will leave again. There won't be anybody here, except me. I can't afford it. We can't afford it. Senior citizens cannot afford this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fife. Thank you for your service. Did you find what you needed?
I, I think I'm in the right place now. My apologies on the parliamentary procedure stuff.
You're good, you're good, you're good. State your name, just for the record.
Yep, my name's Colin McMahon, Ward 5. I, I moved here to Warwick in December 2019, purchased my first, first house here. I got stationed here with the United States Army. I recently retired in November, and I've decided to make Warwick my permanent home.
Thank you.
So thank you to the council members and the people of Warwick for passing this bond measure to invest in the future of Warwick. I have a, a six-year-old son who goes to Warwick Neck Elementary. You know, he plays T-ball. I coached him and Mark's son, Jack, this year. And, and I'm invested in, in making my family's future in Warwick. And the passing of that bond measure, and the building of these schools is one of the reasons that my family has decided to make this our home. And building these schools is a great thing. I'm concerned about this vote. I'm concerned in the political climate that it might not pass. We're going and asking the people of this town in, you know, not the best economic times, for more money after, after we've already voted for $350 million. You know, if it was up to me, I'd say, heck yeah, let's go. But in the current political climate, I'm concerned. So my questions, I have a couple of questions. One being, what, what do we do then if it doesn't pass? Do we go back to, now we need to cut programs? Is that the answer? Okay. Is there somebody that could answer that question?
So, just housekeeping. I didn't want to send you away again, because we already sent you away once. We were in the part of the commentary about being in favor of this proposal, which is to kill the high schools. You are clearly in opposition to this proposal. You would like us to continue to build the high schools, which I, we appreciate. We want to hear from you.
So, my understanding was, let me just, can we just clarify one thing? So my understanding is the vote is to...
The vote is to put a measure on the ballot...
Measure forward, to vote for more money.
To, no, to vote to stop the high school projects, for which we've already spent months and months and months of human hours, thousands of hours, 13 million dollars...
So there was some misinformation going on, on some of the different social media pages there. Thank you for the clarification. I apologize to everybody here for wasting time.
So if we were to move in favor of this today, we would take the 13 million dollars we've already spent in preparing these projects, we'd throw it in the trash, light it on fire. We would have schools that are in desperate need of repair, which we would not have any money to do so.
I'm not in favor of doing that.
We would take 175 million dollars of matching state money, and we would throw that in the garbage as well.
All right.
And we'd start all over. So, excuse me, but thank you for your comments. Do you have anything else to add?
I am in favor for moving forward with building the schools. I apologize. Parliamentary procedure is not my thing.
Thank you so much, and thank you for your service. Good evening, sir.
Yeah, my name's Mike Rainville. I live in Ward 4.
Just make sure the mic goes right in front of you.
Mike Rainville, Ward 4.
Mr. Rainville, nice to see you.
I support Ed Latysor's amendment to void the bond, and I'll give you my reason why. One, I think the taxpayers in general, most of them I talk to, we don't even know what this is going to cost, in regards to tax rates. We should have been presented with that information beforehand. I think it was ill-prepared, ill-conceived, and unfair to the taxpayers. The second thing that I wanted to bring up is, I'm concerned about the perpetual increases in taxes. It's been going on now for a few years, and we read the paper, and they say it's going to go on for endless amounts of time. Me and my wife are retired. We only have so much. We don't have the money tree in the backyard, unfortunately. But what I would like to see is, I would like to see a more professional approach to getting these schools built, and that means getting the cost from the contractors upfront, finding out what it's going to cost for the taxpayers, and then put it on the ballot, let the taxpayers have all the information. That's really my concern. And that, that's really all. And just off the beat a little bit, I also support Councilman Rick's amendment that he came up with in regards to the school budget. I support that 100%.
All right, we're going to, we have to stay focused just for open meeting, but, Mr. Rainville, we very much appreciate it.
Okay.
If you actually just turn around, the entire professional staff that has spent thousands of hours working on these schools is actually sitting right there. So your, your money's in good hands, but we appreciate your comments.
Well, the taxpayers aren't aware of it. So if they're doing the job, they need to get the information out. Because I'm a CPA by vocation, and I can't make sense of any of the numbers that they have, to be honest with you.
Any of us would be happy to sit down and go through with you.
I would just like to see them make a more professional approach and get it out to the taxpayers.
Chairman?
Mr. Rainville, we've had, every two months for the last six months, public meetings. We'll continue that up until the point where we start breaking ground, at which time, probably extend the duration between the meetings, because all you'll hear is, "We poured more concrete today if we kept that frequency." So, we've had them every six months, at which time, we've constantly told the public where we're at financially with the project, designs, et cetera.
You didn't tell us what the tax rate's going to be. That's the key.
That would be on the city side. I apologize, sir.
That's the key.
Yes, sir.
The taxpayers would have been much more educated if they voted and knew how much it was going to cost.
Apologies. But, thank you, Mr. Rainville.
Can I say one thing? Councilman? So, the, Mr. Rainville, actually, if you wouldn't just stay up one more, there was a presentation conducted a couple of years ago, when the bond was passed, what the estimations would be to the impact of a tax rate for education purposes?
Yes.
I didn't know if anyone was prepared to...
I didn't know if anyone was prepared to talk to that.
Mr. Testa, you want to touch on that? You had a pretty good idea the other day. This is David Testa, Chair of the Building Committee.
Thank you. If I remember correctly, you're talking when it was on the ballot, or in anticipation of it being put on, I'm sorry. Is that better?
That's better.
Is that, okay. So, Councilman, you're talking about when in anticipation of it going on to the ballot?
Yes.
We did a couple of public forums. Yeah, I believe at the time, the estimate was, based on the valuation back then, I think 2022 or thereabouts, we had a few different scenarios with a couple of various different kinds of houses where the tax rate was. And I believe at the time, the finance director then may have worked with the city finance department, but it was about a dollar a thousand phased in over a five-year period. That's what I think it was, the general number on a typical house. And I think we had, Mr. McCaffrey, correct me if I'm wrong, we had four or five different examples, like a three-bedroom Cape.
I got your question.
Right, it was, yeah, so...
Thank you, Councilman.
Yeah, so this was based on an anticipated city share of the project of $185 million, which actually, since then, the city share is about $175 million because of increased incentives, reimbursement incentives. And it had, we had, for instance, a three-bedroom Cape located on Greenwood Avenue. The current assessed city value was $258,000. The range of the cost to the homeowner would have been $243 to $305 annually. And that was based on interest rate assumptions from anywhere from 2.5% to 5%. Now again, this is, that was three years ago.
That was three years ago.
Right.
It changed three years.
Of course, evaluations change, yes.
What the taxpayers want today, what it's going to cost us now, and I bet you it's going to be 25% to 30% more in tax rate.
Excuse, excuse me.
I'm sorry.
No, no, you're okay, so...
That's been one of the complaints to the taxpayers, that that's outdated information.
Can you speak into the mic, Mr. Rainville, if you have comments?
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
That was one of the complaints to the taxpayers, that outdated information, it's three years old.
I think we've heard you, and we've heard from other speakers tonight that people want to know, what will be the impact to my tax rate? I think we have all heard that loud and clear, and that is work that we need to do.
Yeah, but we haven't gotten it. That's the problem. The problem is that I think many taxpayers have asked their councilmen, they've asked City Hall, no one's got an answer, it's if and or but. In the real world, I think it would have been an easy sell if people knew exactly what it was going to cost them. But unfortunately, we're going down a road now, but we don't have the information. That's been my major complaint with the way this bond issue was handled.
Thank you, Mr. Rainville. We can certainly do better. We appreciate your comments. Ms. Sheridan, please state your name.
Ian Sheridan. You're a lucky constituent, obviously from Ward 9, and you all know by now where I'm going with this. I agree with everybody that on this side of the spoke, and I appreciate the dedication and hard work from all of the people that have worked in the school. The issue is, I support what Councilman Latisor is saying, but what he's really saying is we need to limit this to 350 at maximum. I mean, my concerns, one of them is that while the state is going to be reimbursing us for X number of dollars, that's going to be filtered into our budget over time. And while there's a guarantee, there's no guarantee as to how that's going to impact us. The other question that I have is whether everybody says the administration doesn't want to own up to what the costs are going to be, but when you do a commercial appraisal, a good appraiser does discounted cash flows and can expand over 10 years what the projections are going to be. So it's not without the ability of this administration to just sit down and say the God's honest truth. And I think if people had the truth, they would be on board. All people want to know is, how much, how much do I need to plan for? And as one more last thought, there are 8,008 single-family homes in the city of Warwick that are owned by senior citizens, and that number's growing every day. And interestingly, we have 8,000 kids in our school system, and that number's declining every day. It needs to be a balance. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sheridan. The time is 7 o'clock. I'm going to pause and turn around and look for guidance on where to go next from here.
So we're going to take a break of the committee because we have other matters that we don't really have much of a choice on and getting to. We're going to convene the full council, which we normally do at this time anyway. We have to go into executive session on a few matters because there are people waiting here who are only here for a brief period of time, and then we will return back to the committee. So, in all likelihood, we're hoping it would be no longer than 30 minutes, if not less, for executive session. I can't promise you that, but that's the hope. So, this committee will be on hold, and everyone take your seats so we can convene the full council.
The committee stands temporarily adjourned.
Did they come out with the new truck?
Clerk's going to call the roll, so council members take your seats.
You ready?
Yep.
Mr. Snappy?
Here.
Mr. DeLuise?
Yeah.
Mr. Foley?
Here.
Mr. Gephardt?
Here.
Mr. Kirby?
Yeah.
Mr. Latissa?
Here.
Mr. Muno?
Yeah.
Mr. Napa?
Here.
Mr. Riggs?
Here.
Nine present.
Don't run anywhere yet. All right, pursuant to Rhode Island General Laws 42-46-5, oh, you're right.
Oh, say, can you see by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose bright stars and bright stars threw the merrily spight? For the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the boughs were singing there? Gave proof through the night that our flag was still there? Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave? For the land of the free and the home of the brave?
We need a motion to go into executive session. So, as a motion pursuant to Rhode Island General Laws 42-46-5, subpart 8, subpart 2, this public body will convene in an executive session regarding pending litigation. Boulay versus City of Warwick, case number 1, colon, 24-CV-00236, and Shakarchi v. Warwick Tax Assessor, case number KC-2023-1058. There was a motion made and seconded to go into executive session. Clerk will call the roll.
Mr. Snappy?
Yes.
Mr. DeLuise?
Yes.
Mr. Foley?
Yes.
Mr. Gephardt?
Yes.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Mr. Latissa?
Here.
Mr. Muno?
Yes.
Mr. Napa?
Yes.
Mr. Riggs?
Yes.
Nine yes to go to executive.
Now we're in an executive session.
Good evening. Quick update, we are filing back in. We're going to get back started with the committee in just a moment. Good evening. Thank you for... We'll get started in a moment. General Laws 42-46-5A2 regarding pending litigation. These were the cases of Boulay, the city of Warwick, case number 124CV00236, and the case of Shakarchi v. Warwick Tax Assessor, case number KC20231058. There were four votes taken. All of them were unanimous, and the two of them are going to be disclosed at this time. One was a motion to seal the minutes of the executive session, and the other was the motion to return to open session. And the council is now back in open session. Mr. President.
Unless anyone has any objection, we will go back to Intergovernmental Committee.
Thank you, Council President. The Intergovernmental Committee stands unadjourned at 7:31. Bringing us back to where we were, we were hearing a public comment from those in favor of PCR 15-25. So speaking in favor of 15-25 would mean that you are in favor of asking the General Assembly to create a bond, sorry, a ballot initiative to stop the progress towards the high schools. So are there any other members of the public which wish to speak in favor of 15-25? Please step to the microphone. Good evening, Ms. Wilson. Please state your name.
Hi, Cindy Wilson. So, I was surprised, Vinnie, to read these comments.
Councilman Gephardt.
Councilman Gephardt.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm sorry, I was reading it off here. The comments that you said about people that are opposed, you said, "Tomorrow will be a fun cheerleading session for the regressive, you know, less developed us, less developed, fearful, weak-willed of us who needs to know what needs to be done but don't have the balls." That was nice. "I for one look forward to putting the silliness behind us and continuing to work on Warwick's future." Silliness, that's interesting. I don't find it silly that I'm afraid that I'm not going to be able to continue to live in Warwick. I think the thought of a new school, new schools, seem wonderful. I mean, who doesn't want something shiny and new? But it's so over budget than what we agreed on that it should come to be voted for again. It's millions over, it's not even close. I mean, if I was purchasing something, and then I went to buy it and they told me that, I would rethink it, and I think you need to give us, we need to be able to rethink it. You know, I'm on a fixed income, so my taxes are $4,400. Of that, $2,700 is for schools. I don't even have a horse in the race. I never have. I've never had a child in Warwick. So I pay $221 a month for schools, and I don't mind paying for schools. I think schools are wonderful. But I really think we should bring it before the public again because my income is fixed. It's not going up. So as taxes go up, you know, I just feel like you're leaving the elderly no choice but to move because it's going to be impossible to continue to pay more and more and more to live in the same place. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson. Just please state your name for the record, sir.
Ray Valino, Ward 5.
One more time, sorry?
Ray Valino, Ward 5. I've heard pretty much what I was going to say, but I just want to go on record as saying I am in favor of this. I think that the plan that we voted for is not the plan that's sitting there now. The budget's, it's going to be overspent. There have been cutbacks already made. So what we voted for, the schools we voted for, is not what's going to happen. So I am strongly in favor of this resolution and put it in front of the voters again. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Valino. Hi, Robin.
Hello, Robin Cardenas, Ward 9.
Just, would you state your name just right into the microphone for us?
That's good. Robin Cardenas, Ward 9. I would also like to see it come back for a vote. At the meeting two weeks ago, there was even a teacher who had concerns. There are only going to be 22 rooms in Tulgate. There isn't going to be a special ed room in either of the schools. With the cutting of square footage, the overruns, and now the tariffs on steel that you're going to have, and the interest we're going to have to pay, we cannot afford these schools right now. I please, please send it back to a vote. Let the people decide. Thank you.
Thank you, Robin. Okay, at this time, I don't see anyone else standing at the microphone. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor of PCR 15-25? All right, I think the time would be appropriate for anyone who would like to speak in opposition to PCR 15-25. Please make your way to the microphone. I'll give my preamble that I gave several hours ago. If you weren't here, try to not be repetitive. We want to hear from as many people as possible. By all means, come up to the microphone, state your case. But, you know, you have 10 minutes. We're running a timer. You do not... your case. But, you know, you have ten minutes. We're running a timer. You do not need to use all ten minutes. If you can say your piece in a shorter amount of time, please do. It'll just help us get through everyone. And come up to the microphone, state your name for the record, and go on with your comments or questions. Sir, step right up. Our first speaker.
Good evening. Thank you. My name is Christopher Mark, Ward two. I'd like to begin my comments with re-stating something that you mentioned, Mr. Lassar, earlier on this evening with the land trust nomination, and that the gentleman that you had listened to and had taken great weight in their ability to speak to the matter was based on their resume. And I'd like to take a few seconds, if I may, about my resume. I am a father of four. All of my students here in Warwick, Rhode Island have either... All of my children here at Warwick have either graduated or are presently attending a Warwick school. My daughter is the president of the debate team, has been accepted into Roger Williams University on a scholarship. My son was on the football team, my daughter at Vets Middle School, and a cheerleader. We are very involved in everything. I have been involved in the Holloman Elementary School, P T A, we're in the fifth grade committee, thank you. We've gone to countless events. We've helped with the fifth grade play and sponsoring, all of that stuff, and are very involved from a personal aspect. From a business aspect, I own and operate Sabre Analytics. We are a data analysis and financial operations efficiency consultancy. Basically, what that means is I go into businesses that are in the five to five-hundred-million range from revenues, and I make them run more efficiently, better, and help them with their operational costs and metrics to make sure that they can operate at a standard that is in a growth pattern. Since the finance committee for the school committee has been in play, I have been a part of that as a resident. So, I have been involved in all of those. And I can let you know, Mr. Lassar, that in here, the nine-million-dollar deficit and some of the other numbers that are portrayed are actually not accurate as of today. Beyond that, some additional statistics to just kind of accentuate why this is just more of an opportunity for inaction, which is causing all of these delays and the inaction of this city right now are the reason why we are in the position we are in and why everything is costing more. As of the 2020 census, forty-five percent of our population were of a median or greater age than a family with children in the school system. So, median age being forty-eight years old, somebody there would have a child in the school system. Forty-five percent of our population are above that. That means forty-five percent of our population had an indirect or no direct relationship or investment in our schools, and yet the bond already passed. We've already put this to vote. We've already had all of this stuff. The only reason we're not at the three hundred and fifty dollars is because of the city inaction. If we had actually put our plan in place, and we had moved forward at the times that we were supposed to, and stopped going back and forth and questioning and putting together all of these different proponents that stymied the start of all of this stuff, we would not be in the position that we're in. I think that this is just another attempt at that. I think it is an attempt to delay, and with people's concerns about the current state of the world, it's not getting better, so it's not getting cheaper. If we stall now, it's only going to get worse. Twenty-five percent tariffs on imported goods, steel being potentially one of them, that's going to increase that cost exponentially. The reason we can thwart that now is by releasing the bond, putting futures on that seal, buying it now at that price, and not receiving that information, and not receiving those goods until we need them. That's what we did in restaurants. When I was a manager at Buggable Creek Steakhouse, we would buy steak six months in advance. At a price point six months now, that wasn't that same price point in the future, save that cost. That's what we need to do. Action is what is going to get this back on track. If we sit and we delay, it's only going to raise and increase those costs. Pushing this to another vote that's going to pass exponentially again is just a waste of our time. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Mark.
Jeremy Langill, Ward five. I have two children at work, Neck Elementary School. I just wanted to come and register my strong opposition to this P C R. We've already voted on this. We didn't vote on architectural plans. We didn't vote on design plans. What we voted on was whether or not to release three hundred and fifty million dollars in bonds with a fifty-two percent reimbursement and to let the school committee and the building committee do the work, which they are doing. Nothing new has been said tonight that hasn't already been explained and litigated, and so for me, we just... It's time to move forward, right? We don't get an eighth bite of the apple. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Netco, welcome.
Darlene Netco, Ward seven. The voters voted on this, on these schools in 2022, and then unfortunately, the city side dragged its feet, as a previous speaker just mentioned. And the city hired a consulting firm to verify whether or not the numbers would work out. And the city was satisfied with what that firm found out. So, here we are, though, in 2025, and we still haven't started construction. Construction is slated to begin this spring. Hopefully, that will happen because the General Assembly has already passed legislation to allow Warwick to drag its feet. Ride had certain deadlines. Ride changed its deadlines basically for Warwick, and it is up to Warwick now to abide by those plans, those meetings, everything that they've already done in order to get the shovels in the ground and get these schools built. Just as a reminder, when you talk about taxes, and we're all taxpayers, our taxes from Warwick are going to the state, and then the state of Rhode Island is taking those taxes and sending them to other districts in the state for them to build new schools. So, why would we allow our Warwick tax dollars to go to other districts to build new schools and not build new schools ourselves? There's talk... There were some comments earlier about the loss of students. Well, if you build the new schools, you will see us retain students and attract other students because we are losing students to other public schools that do have newer schools, that do have newer fields, and our Warwick kids are going to other districts to play on those good fields. So, if we, you know, if you build it, they will come. It's a cliche, but in this case, it's true. The money follows the student when they go to another school district. So, our Warwick money is going to North Kingston and Pontagansett. Somebody sent me a clip. Westerly has an ad, you know, I think Warwick, we need to start making our own ads for our programs. I've said it before, Ride approved Pontagansett and North Kingston out of the gate. They were the first two. They're smaller districts. They were able to get these pathways approved. Warwick, a lot of the other districts...
Can I just ask you to stay on P C R fifteen dash twenty-five, please?
All right. But my point was, as far as the new schools go, we have our new schools. We're not sending... We won't be sending kids out to pathways, and our money will be staying here. As far as the number of students in school, we have to stop using data from the sixties, seventies, eighties, nineties. I mean, when I graduated from Tollgate, I had four hundred and fifty kids in my graduating class. That was nineteen eighty-four. We don't have that now, but nobody does. You know, there was a... That's why we built Pilgrim and Tollgate, because of the number of kids we had. So, we had... And the district has closed schools, consolidated, so on and so forth, tried to save money in that regard. Building new schools will make money. And just drive anywhere around Warwick, there are a lot of new houses being built. Go down Kilvert Street. There is a housing boom on just on Kilvert Street. I see it every day. So, where are those kids going to go to school? Basically, the voters voted. We are going to get reimbursed fifty-two percent. To delay anymore will mean that these schools probably won't be built, and we will not have twenty-first century buildings for our twenty-first century needs. Pilgrim High School cannot upgrade its electricity anymore. You can't put anything else in Pilgrim. Tollgate, we had fire, flood, and wind last year damaged. These schools have to be built. Thank you.
Thank you. Just state your name for the record, please, sir.
Yes, my name's Jeremy Johnston. I'm a four-year Warwick resident, and I have two children that are currently enrolled at Warwick Neck Elementary. I wanted to speak in opposition because I know, as cliche as it might sound to a lot of people, these children, they are our future. They are my future, and they are your future, and they are the city of Warwick's future. And hopefully beyond that, they're the people that will be in here twenty, thirty, forty, fifty, sixty years and beyond, coming and having the same discussions that we're having now. And I think that we've all spoken a lot about, "I don't use this, and I don't use that, and I do do this, and I don't do that." One thing that I know every last person in here has in common is that we have all gone through a school system, parochial, whether it is a public school system, homeschool, we've all done it. We've all reaped the benefits. We're all here because we are intelligent people that want the best for our community, regardless of if we see eye to eye or not. And what I don't want to squander right now is an opportunity to give my children and everybody else's children's, grandchildren, nephews, grandnephews, the opportunity to have what they need and what they deserve, because I cannot think of a better investment in our future than our children. I also wanted to speak behalf of my wife, who's not here today, Ellen Johnston. She wanted me to point out the fact that even though we've been here four years, and we want to stay in Warwick, we love this city, you know, we would have to have a serious conversation about whether or not we stay here if we don't think the city is putting our children or other children's best interests at heart. And we would consider moving here, from here, and we do think that others would consider doing the same, or possibly not coming. And I think it would be a shame for that. The last thing that I would like to say is, if not now, when? This is a bill that is coming due eventually. There is no way around that, and it only gets more expensive if we put off. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnston. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Stuart Wilson. I live in Ward one. I also want to oppose this P C R. I think... I don't want to be repetitive, so I'll try to be... I'll try not. But I'm glad we talked about the schools as an investment. It is a giant, and I think fantastic, investment in the city, but it is also one that has been delayed, and the further delayed, the more it will cost us. And I don't know that there will be more rewards for it. So, I want to see this happen quickly, and I think I have looked at these plans for the schools, and they look like great plans. I mean, these are... If you spent time with the materials, it was years ago now, I recognize, so I don't remember it all. But I'm not an expert in the architecture of education and what that looks like in the twenty-first century. So, I do have to, like, let the experts handle that. But we know it's only going to get more expensive if we put it off. But that's the practical stuff. I want to... I think there is a responsibility the city has that is beyond just that, to educate children. If we put it off, that's, you know, how many graduating classes are we then asking to not get the best education because we shuffled our feet again? I don't think that's fair to the kids, and we do have a responsibility to educate all the children in our city, and this is a great plan to continue doing that. And I just... My kids go to Wyman Elementary. They're in kindergarten and third grade, and they are having a great experience at this school. But it's also an old school. And I know there's other things our school department also needs to be working on in the future that is not just these schools, these two high schools. So, that's why I oppose. Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Good evening.
Jacob Medor, Warwick resident, Warwick graduate, and a Warwick teacher. I'm going to look at this through a macro level, not a micro level, so just give me the smallest bit of latitude on promise. It will make sense. I want to... The idea, what gives this council authority? What gives you power to do anything? The same idea is true with the school committee, with the mayor. It's the people, right? The people of Warwick did their resource, and they entrusted you guys through their votes to make decisions on their behalf. Now, this P C R claims to follow in those footsteps, and it goes right with our democratic instincts to do so. My concern is this whole process already played out. This election already happened. I heard some people speak tonight that we should do one high school, not two, or we should renou, or we should do one big high school, or some combination thereof. Now, those are conversations which were worth having, except they already happened. They happened, and the election came and gone. I remember that election very well. I was with Councilman Lattister for a great part of it, holding a sign in support of the bond. So, and the idea and the notion that it has changed... I'm going to just read in part what was on the ballot. "To finance the construction, renovation, improvement, alteration, repair, landscaping, furnishing, and equipping of two new high schools for the school facilities to replace Pilgrim High School and Tollgate High School, and all the attended expenses, including but not limited to demolition, engineering, architectural costs, subject to the approval, et cetera, et cetera." All of that is still happening. Now, did the blueprint change a little? Of course. I think everyone went into the ballot booth knowing that that was probably going to happen, okay? Therefore, you can't ignore a process, or you can't ignore the results of an election just because you came out on the losing side, just because you didn't win. Sometimes you win, sometimes you lose. It's like the kid on the playground who the car didn't go their way. They argue, and instead of keep going, they take their ball and they go home. That's not how democracy works, and what this would lead to is endless election cycles, and no one would ever get anything done. It would... This P C R would undermine the very notion and the very saying that gives you guys power, which is honoring the results of an election, honoring democracy, and honoring the will of the people, okay? Not to silence the people of Warwick under the fraught premise of giving Warwick residents a voice that you would only later ignore if you disagree the outcome isn't a recipe for success. Thank you.
Thank you, Jacob. Good evening.
Hello. My name is Kristen Rubin, and I live in Ward one. I graduated from Pilgrim myself in two thousand and five and decided to move to this wonderful city of Warwick. My husband and I purchased our house when I was pregnant with my first child in 2017. The biggest deciding factor of where we wanted to settle down was, what's the school district like? Where are our kids going to go to school? And Warwick, I don't think to anyone's surprise in this room, was not in the top choice, not in the top five, maybe. There were a lot of better choices when it came to the school district. But I grew up here. My family is here, and we decided, let's stay for a couple of years, and then we'll move. We'll move to North Kingston to a better school district. I now have a seven-year-old, a five-year-old, and a four-year-old, so my oldest is in elementary at Holloman. And when we heard that these new high schools were going to be built, we said, "Hey, maybe we can stay. Maybe we can stay here." So, much to no one's surprise, I do not want to halt the construction of these schools. I think it's important for a city to have a good school system, and I'm not saying even the best, you know, the shiny new thing. It's... I think we're asking for just the basics of what kids need in this day and age to learn. So, it's no surprise that that's what I want. But I also am a small business owner in Warwick, and the majority of my patients, my patient population, are senior citizens in Warwick. So, I can appreciate, you know, the concerns here, and I need the senior citizens in Warwick to stay so that I can keep my business as well. And I think we all want the same thing, you know? This side, we're scared to be... Have to move out of Warwick because we can't afford it. This side, we don't want to have to move out of Warwick because our kids won't have a place to go to school. So, we all want the same thing, and... But we do need the schools, and it's... So we all want the same thing, and, but we do need the schools, and it's gonna come sooner or later. It's only going to get more expensive as time passes. So the time is now. We voted on it, and I think opening it back up for another vote is just going to give an opportunity to delay it further, and that's not good for the city. The city needs these schools, and now is the time to do it. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rubin. Hello.
Hi, my name is Joanna Conley. I am a resident of Ward One. I have to say, I can't believe we are back here doing this again. I'm really in shock. When I spoke last time, I said, that was it, I'm not talking again, but I have to be here fighting for my kids. I have two small children. I have one in preschool four, and I have a third grader. They are in parochial school right now. And my plan with my husband was always to send our children to Pilgrim High School. And I have a lot of friends who do not have children in public school, they are in parochial school, who had plans to send them to public school, that I hope that we are also taking into consideration. There are a lot more children that we had all had intentions, us parents, to send our kids to public school that we may not be taking into account. I really want to keep on with that plan. That was all my intention this whole time, and I was really excited that we were moving forward. We all voted, we all heard what we needed to hear, we made the decision. I was informed, just like everybody else, and the fact that I'm standing here again is shocking to me. When my husband and I did work on our home when we moved in nine years ago, and we did work on our home eight years ago, we sat before the committee, and we had to ask for permission to get some certain things done, and they asked me, why do you want to do this to your home? Why? I said, I want to have a family here, I plan to grow my family here, I want my kids to go to school, whereby my sister-in-law, my husband, all my friends have gone to school, which was Pilgrim. And we had every intention. My husband grew up here, I did not. I am a transplant from New Jersey, and I love being here. This is like home, this is my home. And now that this may not happen again, we're having this conversation, we now had to have another hard conversation of, are we staying here? We did all, we did our work to our home, we asked for it, we had every intention eight years ago, and now we're questioning, do we need to leave? Was this the right place? And I really hope that we can say that we made the right decision, that you will do right by us families who want to stay, and want our kids, and do right by our children. So I'm asking, I mean, it's time to move forward. We, everybody says we can't afford to do this. We can't afford not to do this at this point. We really can't. It's time. We have to move forward. We have to put the shovels in the ground. We have to do what I voted on and was promised, and you have to do right by these children and these families. You really do. So I oppose this. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Conley. Good evening, Superintendent.
Good evening, Councilwoman Gettart, and members of the committee and council. I'm here for you, before you tonight, to say that I do not support the schools going back up to the ballot. For 39 years, I've been coming to Warwick for one reason and one reason only, it's for the children. Every day, I drive here, what can I do to make schools better for the children? And I feel like with all the politics and everything that's going on, the children are kind of getting swept to the sidelines. So I'm here, they don't have a voice, I want to be their voice tonight. The children deserve, Warwick children deserve new high schools, they deserve new science labs, they deserve new furniture where they can collaborate and work in groups, they deserve new auditoriums and athletic fields. Warwick children should not be swept aside. They deserve, just like all the other communities, Warwick children are just as, just as good, if not better, than the children in other cities and communities. So they do deserve the same. So I'm gonna ask you to keep the eye on the prize, the prizes of students. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent. Mr. Tester.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is David Tester. I live in Ward One, 1107 Narragansett Parkway. I'm a school committee member, chair of the building committee, father of three daughters, all of whom graduated Pilgrim High School, and a taxpayer. I come before this council to strongly urge you to reject this resolution. Frankly, after reading the preambulatory clauses of the resolution, it's as if everything but the kitchen sink was put in to justify asking for this, for this project to be stopped. In my opinion, what's being proposed tonight is not some kind of democracy in action, rather it's an effort to subvert the will of the voters because some people didn't like the result. For those keeping score, Central Falls also approved their high school bond in 2022, and their school should be completed by the end of this year. And here we are, three years later, arguing if the will of the voters in 2022 should be second-guessed. In February, in a February 6, 2020 Warwick Beacon article, former council president Steve Marola said, quote, "He urged the committee to think big and to restore Warwick schools to a place where they are the envy of other communities. He noted that the state would pay half and even more of the cost of improvements. He said, 'The longer we wait, the greater chance they can offer it because the money won't be there.' He said, 'The condition of Warwick schools is driving families out of Warwick, and in some cases, leading parents to send their children to other districts at a loss of state funding.'" Quote, "We've got to put forth the effort to get new schools," unquote, Marola said. And that is exactly what we're trying to do, and that's exactly what nearly 60% of the voters voted for in 2022. But what bothers me the most about this resolution is the verbiage that says, quote, "The taxpayers may not receive the quality of school facilities marketed to the voters." This is as utterly ridiculous as the bait-and-switch canard that's been leveled at the school department, and the equally ridiculous automotive analogies such as a Rolls-Royce to a VW or a Lexus to a Toyota that's used to attempt to bolster the point. As has been said publicly many times, and in this chamber, the original design proposals were conceptual, not final designs. No one ever said or even hinted that revisions would not be made during this process. The conceptual designs included solar panels, for which we were criticized by some when they were presented, and then criticized by some when they were removed. If anyone thought the conceptual design was the final design, then they just weren't paying attention. We didn't contribute to anyone's failure to understand that in any way, shape, or form. Every new school construction project goes through design revisions. These Providence, Central Falls, Cranston, Johnston did, and so did North Kingstown back in 2000. So to suggest that in Warwick, this is some kind of a fault or worse deception, is foolish, outrageous, and ignorant. This process began in 2020 with community visioning teams under educational consultant Frank Locker. These teams consisted of students, teachers, administrators, and community leaders, who formulated what they wanted programmatically in their high schools. I believe Councilmember Sinapi was a regular attendee. Their work was represented in the circular bubble charts that were part of the several presentations made to both the public and to the council. Among those were comprehensive high schools that included career and tech programs at both, learning communities with disciplines combined in learning wings, flexible spaces for construction, modern, and yes, equitable athletic facilities. What's important to understand is that we haven't compromised a single student program component in the current design, not one. That's a testament to the hard work and creativity of our architects, who are here, Demio Construction, who is here, Leftfield, a project manager, who is here, and the constant oversight of Mr. Gothberg and Mr. Iafredi, and it should be complimented, not criticized. There has been a lot of out-of-the-box thinking to get where we are today, and no, that doesn't mean that we're building cheap buildings. It's another piece of drivel among the many found on social media. The revisions made to the designs were thoughtful, creative, and when needed, collaborative. As has been stated publicly and conveniently ignored by the critics, the vast majority of these revisions were on the constructibility side of the equation. Things like replacing granite curbing with concrete curbing, reducing the amount of interior glass to address teacher concerns, using the Pilgrim Annex Building instead of constructing a new concession stand, etc. But since these revisions don't fit certain narratives, they're ignored, and worse, demagogued into the foolish bait-and-switch diatribe. Now, let's get to where the rubber really meets the road, the numbers. The current project has a guaranteed reimbursement rate of $173 million plus interest. It's approximately $240 million in total. To date, we've spent approximately $13 million. We've also received $2.9 million in Pago funding from the state, which is essentially upfront reimbursement for work done. In October, the projected overage was $38 million. I said publicly at that time that I thought the number was not realistic, but social media and some elected officials took it as gospel and recklessly ran with it for the singular purpose of whipping up the public. While that number dropped by 38% to 23 million, and instead of complimenting the continuous efforts that resulted in this, some criticized it as being part of some kind of a numbers shell game, showing that no good deed goes unpunished. I believe that more hard work can reduce this number even further, to where we end up pretty darn close to the $350 million number, again, without compromising student program spaces. What needs to be clearly understood is that from the time the voters approved the bond in November of 2022, to when the city's peer review of our peer review was completed in September of 2023, that delay added roughly $20 million to the cost of the project because of construction inflation. Those are Rides figures, not mine, and our current gap is 23 million. I offer this not as a criticism, but as a simple fact, but we can all do that math. If this resolution should pass tonight, and I hope it doesn't, then should the work stop until the vote? And if the vote is rejected, who gets blamed for the increased cost due to the delay? Should the work continue? If yes, and the voters approve it, who gets blamed for the continued spending? If the project is stopped, the following will happen. The 13 million already spent will have to be paid back with interest, the 2.9 million in Pago money will have to be promptly repaid to the state, and the current $173 million plus interest guaranteed reimbursement goes away because the additional incentives have expired. And then after the, what I call the stop-at crowd, has finished congratulating themselves for a job well done, I'd ask what their plan B is, because the entire ride process has to begin anew, and the only reimbursement we receive is 35%. So whether they want to build one new high school and renovate the other, or do major renovations to both, we're looking at a minimum of $300 million with a 35% reimbursement, or 105 million plus interest. So taxpayers pay back 195 million. But the current project has, again, a guaranteed $173 million reimbursement, so at 350 million, the taxpayers will pay back 177 million plus interest, nearly 20 million less for brand-new buildings. There are ways to deal with what I believe could be a very moderate cost overage, other than additional borrowing, which is not reimbursable. And that could be through bond premium, which doesn't require borrowing more money. But that's a city-side decision, that's not a school department decision. I would add that over the last couple of years, Central Falls, Lincoln, Providence, Newport, Middletown, Johnston, Carmel, and East Greenwich have used that to both service their debt and deal with scope changes. So in the end, as a taxpayer, excuse me, as a taxpayer, it looks to me like the stop-at crowd would rather have us pay an additional 20 million more dollars plus interest versus the burden the hand we already have. That doesn't make sense to me, and I hope it doesn't make sense to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tester. Good evening. Just state your name for the record.
Mike O'Mono, resident of Ward Eight, and I won't be long, just, just here to say I am a father of four, and resident of seven years. I like it here, would like to stay here. It's very clear to me, these high schools are in bad shape, they need to be redone. My oldest is six, my youngest are one, twins, and I have very little faith that if it doesn't move forward now, that it's ever gonna move forward, that those kids are, at that age, are ever gonna see, you know, reasonable schools. You know, the quality of the schools are really where almost the conversation starts and ends. If it's, if it's a town, you take pride in if you invest in your future. So I just kind of wanted to voice that, and strongly opposed to.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone. I'm Tiffany Maguire. I'm a Warwick resident, Ward Four. My mother is a Warwick resident. I have two children in Warwick Public Schools, and I've been a Warwick teacher for 21 years, and I've taught for Tollgate going on my second year. And I do not support another ballot. I had a pros and cons list of 14 versus seven, and quickly after talking with the architect, I now only have a pros list. 30% reimbursement rate instead of 35%, obviously makes sense. Students' education will not be disrupted for the new construction. To build new schools will never be cheaper. Other districts are taking advantage, why wouldn't we? It could end or at least significantly decline kids leaving Warwick, at the cost of $16,500 a year per student. And they're largely good students that we want to keep and attract. It would increase morale among faculty, staff, and students. It would increase home values. Demio is said to be the best in the business, said even by people who oppose new schools. And Demio and the school committee have been transparent about the costs, even when it doesn't benefit them. The longer we procrastinate, the higher the cost increases. We've already been through this. It's been approved by RIDE, which is a long, arduous process. There's no other feasible way to update the schools. We were told repeatedly that Pilgrim and Tollgate can't handle any significant upgrades, so we need to move on. The school's facilities are mediocre at best. I graduated from Tollgate in 1997, and it looks largely exactly the same. The fields are atrocious. It's sad. My classroom is 87 degrees in September and October, and May and June. I have two fans that I have to stop when I want to speak so the kids can hear me. The savings on heat and electric would be significant. We have already compared and contrasted options, and we need to act. There's no land to put a super high school in, the traffic would be a nightmare, and I really do not want close to 4,000 students in one building anyway. That sounds like a nightmare to me. And I'd like to thank everyone, the school committee, architects, town council, and teachers' union, for your hard work on this matter. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Maguire. Just state your name for the record, sir.
Hello, my name is Kevin Dakin. I'm a citizen here, I've been living here for 12 or 13 years. I have a son in the elementary school. Obviously, I have self-interest as to why I'm opposing this, but what I'd like to point out is, any homeowner in the city, what it, what it means to them. Real quick, I found a couple of real quick stats here. The average, let's see, a title reported school spend rises property value, found that for every dollar spent on public schools in an area, home values increased by 20. For every point, let's see, here's another good one. That for every improvement in test scores in suburban neighborhoods can rise home prices by 2.5%. And this one, this one really hit me pretty hard. The difference between good schools and bad schools is a value of $205,000 to a home. So if we don't do this, then think about where your home values might be if this continues to decline as a school system versus investing to make it more competitive and better. Like I said, I'm a, I'm a, I'm a parent. We've had the conversation about whether we want to stay in the city because of the investment in the schools, or whether we go private. But I'd like to say that, you know, for every citizen who thinks that this is coming out of their bottom line, it is, it's coming out of your home prices, the values of the homes you live in, and this investment will help your home prices. Thank you.
Thank you. Chairman Gallagher.
Sean Gallagher, Ward Two, Warwick School Committee Chairman, occasionally Warwick's whipping boy. Now, I'm just gonna say I echo all the comments that were just made by the previous speakers. My wife and I, we have three children, all in elementary school at this time, and we both graduated from Pilgrim High School. We both loved Pilgrim High School, so much so that we bought our home on Pilgrim Drive, okay? So that's how much pride we have in our school. However, what I could tell you is, as much pride as I have in that school, that school needed to be replaced when I was there. When you have to move your hips to walk around a 55-gallon brute barrel to collect water, that's an issue, and that has not changed, that continues to be the case. And as you heard, you know, I know some people say, well, why, why are you replacing Tollgate? Tollgate doesn't need to be replaced, and as you heard, Ms. Neko, in one school year, actually in a three, four-month period, we had a roof coming off, we had a fire, an electrical fire, we had a pipe break. So I think that that, just that one quarter is enough to justify why that school needs to be replaced. I'll talk real quick as a parent. What I'll tell you right now is, I'm happy as a community, we decided to move forward with high schools, because if we didn't, I would tell you exactly what's gonna happen. Families like mine will not put their kids into these schools, knowing that in 10 years they're gonna be there or so, and with no action by this city, I don't want them to go to the same school that I went into that needed to be repaired back then. Now, I'll speak as a taxpayer. I voted in November of 22, so I expect that the I voted in November of '22, so I expect that these schools be replaced, because that's our democratic process. You have an election, you voice your opinion, you either win or you lose, and then that's it. And then lastly, I'll speak as an elected official. I was very fortunate to be afforded the opportunity, which now, these days, I scratch my head, to be elected to the school committee. And on January 3rd, 2023, I was sworn in, and I remember standing there up on the stage with my colleague, Ms. Hazelwood, and Ms. Kirby Chapman, the two other district representatives. And as the mayor swore us in, we had to swear an oath to defend the Constitution and all of its components, the same very oath that elected officials up here before me took just a few weeks ago. And it's not for me to decide if I accept or deny election results. I spoke to a very wise councilman who said to me, Sean, it's not for you to decide what the schools look like. The voters said, build us two schools at $350 million. So, yeah, would I love Pilgrim to have a domed baseball field? Of course. But I have to build it to $350 million. Would I love amazing LED lights on the outside of our school shining black and gold at night? Yes, but we can't afford it, and we have to build it to $350 million. There's a legally binding contract between the taxpayers of this city and the school department that was approved November 8th, 2022, and it says, we want two high schools at $350 million. So this resolution that's before you this evening is not for any of us as elected officials to decide, should we just stop building the schools, or do we continue to build the schools? The taxpayers decided that. If anything, there should be a new resolution down the road if we need to bond for more money, if we exceed the $350 million. That's what the expectation should be, if we go above that $350 million. Now, the school committee held a forum in August of last year, and we committed, we said, every two months we'll run these. So we've been very transparent. We held another one in October, even when the numbers were unfavorable for our position on this, when it was $37.8 million over budget. We still said, you know what? Put our heads down, go out there, give them the numbers, and continue to move forward. We did it again in January, and we made it a public forum allowing for Q and A, in which only six members of the public showed up to ask questions. And in full transparency, I replicated what Council President Sinapi and the chair of this committee are doing, where I gave everybody the full five minutes. So Mr. Cody came with great questions, and his time went just under a little 15 minutes in totality. So it was very fair. So as an elected official, I don't believe that it's our right to just say, you know what? No, let's just, let's do it over. Let's do it over. There's a legally binding contract. A few years back, I remember an elected official, not at the local or city level or state level, he said, I don't like the election results. I don't believe in them. Let's redo it. And now here we are in Warwick with our own case. So I stand here tonight before you, strongly opposing this. I don't even want to give it the credit of calling it a resolution, but I oppose it. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman.
Good evening. Just state your name for the record.
Good evening. My name is Jacqueline Rastella. I'm from Ward Two, and I have been a homeowner here in Warwick for 25 years. As a child, was also a Warwickian and attended Gordon, Sherman, Vets. My children have gone through Pilgrim. I get to graduate myself from Pilgrim, not having to go there anymore this year. My daughter's a senior. And I'm very disappointed. I have been quite active. I've testified a number of times over the decades, and I'm saddened that we're back here. But if we're going to review history, I think there's a piece that's missing. Mr. Tessa is much more eloquent at the numbers, and he did start to tap into what some of the costs would be to make the schools up to par from their existing structure, what kinds of improvements are going to be made. And maybe that will help some of the other constituents to be able to understand what we're talking about, that you could just be talking about a sliver of a difference, and we are going to miss out on an opportunity. But the longer we wait and tariffs come in and all the political strife around us, which will impact education down the line, we don't want to wait too much longer. So this could go to resolution soon, but I really feel as though that other piece for constituents would be helpful, to have a full understanding. If we don't continue to push this through, the difference may not be such that we should just go ahead and bite the bullet.
Thank you so much for your comments.
Just before our last speaker currently makes her comments, if there's anyone else who would like to speak, make your way down to the microphone. I just want to wrap this up, and the microphone's all yours.
Thank you. My name is Kim Serpovitz. I am of Ward Seven, and wasn't planning to speak tonight, but I brought my kids tonight. I've got my son, who is in sixth grade at Winman, and my daughter, who is in fourth grade over at Robertson, just close by here. And I wanted to say that they deserve a better school. I have a 27-year-old who graduated from Tollgate in 2015. The school was a disappointment then. I haven't been into Tollgate since. I can't imagine that it's better. I came myself from Exeter West Greenwich Schools, where we had the joy of going into a brand-new high school, brand-new junior high and high school. I would like to give my children that same opportunity, and my son in Winman, the last two semesters, has gotten high honors. I would like to provide him. Excuse me. Thank you.
He's blushing.
He is, very much so. But I'd like to provide him with a quality education. I think as a parent, and so many other parents in this district, feel that if this does not go through, we are failing our children. And that is, and as so many other people have said, our children are the future, and they are the most important thing. That's all I have to say.
Thank you so much.
If there is no one else who'd like to make comments live on the mic, we have two written comments that the council president will read into the record.
Yeah, assuming no one has any objection.
Assuming no one has any objection.
We have a quick one from one Jim Mixner. He wanted to state that the projected numbers represented back in 2022 on the property tax impact to this bond would have averaged approximately $280 annually per taxpayer, with obvious delays. Without finger pointing, this number is roughly 25 to 30% greater now. What the public hasn't heard is what this number actually may individually represent. Without being exact, on average, individual tax adjustments may only be $360 annually. It would be extremely helpful if this was stated, if the number was stated, instead of $350-plus million that is being discussed, we are all in this together to make Warwick Public Schools the best that they can be. That's from one Jim Mixner. And then we have from the Assistant Executive Director of Build RI, City of their domestic nonprofit trade organization comprised of four contractor associations, the Labor Relations Division of the Rhode Island Chapter of the Associated General Contractors, the New England Mechanical Contractors Association, the Rhode Island Mason Contractors Association, and the Rhode Island and Southeast Massachusetts Chapter of the National Electrics Contractors Association. Okay? I can see why they simplified it to Build RI. And 17 local trade unions comprised of approximately 10,000 local tradesmen and women. Build RI and their partners urged the Warwick City Council to oppose PCR-15-25, which would threaten the construction of the two Warwick high schools. It is our understanding the prime contractor is preparing to publish their subcontractor packages. A delay in the groundbreaking of these projects scheduled for April will cause uncertainty. The uncertainty, in our expert opinion, would most likely decrease the number of subcontractors willing to bid on the sub-packages that your prime contractor is publishing. A limited number of subcontractors could cause pricing uncertainty, which would cause the projects delta to expand. The development of these two new high schools will lead to tens of thousands of hours for the men and women of the building trades. Warwick is home to nearly 1,000 building trades members, many of which will have the opportunity to literally lay the foundation for the next generations of Warwick students. By approving this resolution, the families for the building trades will be caught up in the same uncertainty in knowing when, where they will be going to work next. Lastly, the citizens of Warwick have already voiced their support at the ballot box during a high turnout general election in November 2022. Special elections lead to historically low turnout, leading to a small minority of voters deciding the fate of an important election. Holding a special election to run, counter to a previously-held general election, would give a greater voice to a few citizens of Warwick opposed to the vast majority of the city. The majority of Warwick's voting citizens voted and approved the spending of $350 million to construct two more than needed high school facilities. Thank you for your attention to this correspondence. Please contact the undersigned if you have any questions. Signed by Anthony Cherry, Assistant Executive Director of Build RI. Bear in mind, these statements don't represent any of the statements from the council. These are just for those two individuals.
Thank you, Council President. With that, I think we're closed on the public comment portion here.
So if possible, if we can get this to the full floor, that way we can get to our public hearings, which obviously we have a stenographer here by waiting. And then we can have all the council members weigh in once it's on the full floor, as opposed to doing it piecemeal.
Okay. I would not be opposed to that, just in the, in recognition that we have some timely matters. So we, I would entertain a motion to move this to the full floor without recommendation.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And with that, the Intergovernmental Committee is adjourned. So we will pick this back up in the full council meeting for discussion and vote by the council members. We just have some time-sensitive issues that we have to get to prior to that. Thank you.
Would the Public Properties Committee now convene?
I'm going to switch chairs. Where do you want to sit? I'll stay where I was. I'm going to stay right here. I got to stretch my legs.
The City Council Committee on Public Properties, Land Use, and Community Affairs opens at 8:30 PM. Do we have a motion for acceptance of the minutes from the committee meeting held on January 13th, 2025?
So moved.
Councilman Kirby, seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous. First up, we have PCO-1-25, An Ordnance Amending the City of Warwick Zoning Ordinances, Tower Co., 2013 LLC, and Selco Partnership DBA Verizon Wireless, applicant. 150 Draper Ave, Assessors Platt 15, excuse me, Assessors Platt 354, Lot 49. This is in Ward Five. I would be looking for a motion to move to the floor for public hearing. Do I? Thank you.
Second.
Councilman Kirby, and DeLuise, second. All in favor?
Aye.
The next two items are also up for public hearings. We have PCO-2-25, An Ordnance Amending Appendix A, zoning ordinance of the City of Warwick to expand the geographical area in which retail sales of marijuana and related products can occur. Thousand Lakes LLC, petitioner. 319 Bald Hill Road, Assessors Platt 273, Lot 481. This is Ward Eight. Do I have a motion to move to the floor for public hearing? All right. Thank you. Councilman Kirby, seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Third, we have PCO-3-25, An Ordnance Amending the Zoning Ordinances of the City of Warwick, Sprague Covington LLC, applicant. 112 Old Warwick Avenue, Assessors Platt 351, Lot 234. This is Ward Five. Do I have a motion to move to the full council to the floor for public hearing? Thank you. Councilman Kirby makes the motion. Councilman Foley, seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Fourth item, we'll just move this out of committee as it's the last one, or rather, I'm suggesting we move it out of committee. We have PCR-13-25, A Resolution in Observance of Black History Month. This is introduced by myself, co-sponsored by most of the council. So for this one, we'll just go straight to public comment. Is there any public comment on this resolution, a resolution in observance of Black History Hearing none? I would, I would request a motion for favorable action. All right. Thank you. Councilman Kirby, seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
And with that, the City Council Committee on Public Properties, Land Use, and Community Affairs adjourns at 8:33 PM.
All right. Unless there's any objection, we're going to go right to the first public hearing. PCO-1-25, An Ordnance Amending the City of Warwick Zoning Ordinances, Tower Co., 2013, LLC. Oh, no?
It's not working.
All right. Well, then, there is an objection. So we're going to start first with announcements of congratulations, condolences, or community events, then. Are there any announcements of congratulations, condolences, or community events? Seeing none? We go to... No executive communications report. Next, we have acceptance of minutes from the council meeting held on January 27th, 2025. Do we have a motion?
Move favorable.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Any abstentions?
Mr. Delouise?
Yes.
Mr. Delouise?
Yes.
Mr. Delouise?
Yes.
Mr. Delouise?
Yes.
Mr. Delouise?
Next, we have Land Trust Commission.
Uh, point of order.
Yep.
Mr. President, in the past, we have taken these as a consent calendar-type deal. There are, no? Okay, never mind. Forget that.
No worries. Next, we have Land Trust Commission, one Mr. Tyler Macaffrey.
Committee recommends favorable action.
Second.
Motion, well, Councilman Gephardt, motion?
Move favorable actions. Second.
Made by Councilman Gephardt, seconded by Councilman Lattiser. Any questions or comments? Seeing none. Clerk will call the roll.
Mr. Snappy?
Yes.
Mr. Delouise?
Yes.
Mr. Bowley?
Yes.
Mr. Gephardt?
Yes.
Mr. Delouise?
Yes.
Mr. Bowley?
Yes.
Mr. Delouise?
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 Yes.
Nine yes appointment passes.
Just for completeness, Consent Calendar, PCR 24-25, Resolution Relative to Bids. This is Finance.
Committee recommends favorable action.
Councilman Lattiser for action?
Yes, hold on one second.
No worries.
We have Item 2025-364, Cell Phone Licensing Support. Item Number 2, 2025-366, Life PAC 35. Item Number 3, 2025-006C, Quarterly Fire Alarm. Item 2025-341, Police Department.
Give a second.
And seconded by who on the move?
Second.
So Councilman Gephardt, and I heard at least one other. Any questions or comments on the consent calendar? Seeing none, clerk will call the roll.
Mr. Snappy?
Yes.
Mr. Delouise?
Yes.
Mr. Bowley?
Yes.
Mr. Gephardt?
Yes.
Mr. Delouise?
Yes.
Mr. Bowley?
Yes.
Mr. Gephardt?
Yes.
Mr. Delouise?
Yes.
Mr. Delouise?
Yes.
Nine yes consent passes.
All right, next. Now we'll do PCO 1-25, An Ordnance Amending the City of Warwick Zoning Ordinances, Tower Co., 2013 LLC, and Cell Co. Partnership DBA, Verizon Wireless, applicant 150, Draper Ave., Assessors Platt 354, Lot 49. This is Public Properties.
Thank you, Council President. Yes, we had a motion to move to the floor for public hearing. Therefore, I'll move at this time, move to open the public hearing.
Motion made by Councilman Ricks to open up the public hearing, seconded by Councilman Foley. Any questions or comments? All right, so public hearing is now...
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? All against? Abstentions?
Heather.
All right.
Tom Kravitz, City Planning Director. Just make some opening statements prior to the applicant making their presentation, which is typical. As you recall, this tower was initiated by the administration. Its primary reason is to improve life safety, communication, cell service in this one part of the city. This is very similar to what happened up at Clegg Field when we lost that tower, which is now nearly complete with construction. Similar to that application, this tower will improve communications. This council had awarded the bid to Tower Co., and then it has since come before the planning board. You have that positive decision of approval. I think it was recorded in November, November 14th of '24. And I'm here to answer any questions that might come up. I know the applicant will make a presentation, and I'll throw it back to the council.
All right, so first we'll hear from the applicant, then we'll hear from supporters, or anyone in support, rather, then anyone against, then everybody else, and then we'll close the public hearing and we'll shift it to the council. So first, can we have the applicant, please?
time tonight. My name is Attorney David Dahl Bash, and I am the local counsel for Tower Co. We are requesting an amendment to the city zoning ordinance to change resident A10 to resident A10 with 611 telecommunication use. Specifically, we're seeking approval for the placement of a cell tower on the real estate owned and subleased, or will be subleased by Warwick, located in the wooded area off of Draper Ave., Number 150. This is coming out of an approval from the planning department back in November of 2024. We have a number of experts from Tower Co. and from their subs, including Jess Moreno over at Civil Engineering at Proterra, Igor Ivsek at Background Structure Consulting, Kerry Fazliari at Tower Co., Martin Laban, who is an engineer at C Squared, and Mr. James Valeriani, who is also counsel for Tower Co. And at this point, I'd be more than happy to hand it off to Mr. Valeriani now.
Thank you. Thank you, David. And, yeah, so Verizon Wireless has been pursuing this location for a number of years. Like many of the wireless carriers, they're now contracting out their tower development. See, tower companies across the country, and the tower companies assume our responsibility for getting these sites permitted and built, and providing space on the tower for Verizon in exchange for rent. Now, we're paying the city of Warwick rent. Tower Co. shall be paying the city of Warwick rent. This site is ideal for various reasons. Quite frankly, it seems to be the only feasible site in the area. Verizon has approximately 20 sites in and around Warwick. We have, I think, 11 in Warwick. We have one at a fire station, one at the police and fire headquarters, and then, of course, Clegg Field, which is a rebuild. And now, this location, and this site was walked by the planning office and school department reps, and they selected that stand of trees off of Draper Ave. to provide as much coverage, as much screening of the tower as possible. It's a 135-foot monopole, which is a relatively low height in this day and age. You know, 10, 15 years ago, 20, 200-foot towers were, were the norm. So the towers are coming down in height, but in, as a result of that, because of the capacity issues and the dense population of Warwick, you know, more cell sites are required. So we're happy with this site. It's got some very good setbacks from the property lines. I mean, there's 380 feet from Draper Ave. to the north, 775 feet to the east, 906 feet to the south, and 330 feet from Old Mill Brook. Now, we are outside the wetland area. We're outside the wetland buffer. We're outside the 100-year flood plain. We're partially within the 500-year flood plain. It's a 60 by 60 area. The tower foundation will go down, you know, 20 feet or so, but everything else is that grade, on pads. There's overhead electric and telco throughout that area, as well as coming into the Draper Ave. School Department parcel. And so we're running overhead line over to the cell tower, then go underneath, put a transformer down, and then put in a bank of meters, and it'll accommodate up to four carriers. There are four carriers operating, I think, in this market. I think if you count Cox, if they're still operating, five, but Dish Wireless, T-Mobile, AT&amp;T, and Verizon. It's an unmanned facility, locked gate, generator necessary for a power outage. That's an FCC requirement, and the generator would be fueled by propane. It would only run during a power outage of approximately six hours or more. Okay? And it would cycle maybe once or twice a month for maintenance purposes, but it's a type of generator, but similar to a small truck engine. But given the significant distances to the butters, I mean, the 200-foot notification resulted in 86 notices going out to surrounding property owners. And, you know, they're all, we believe, a very good distance away. We've got a visual study that has, we believe, results that show very low visibility for this site. It, again, it's quite a distance away. There's no impact to municipal infrastructure, no water or sewer hookups or anything like that. And it gives Verizon the coverage it needs in that area. I think the local paper had an article about the difficulty with service in that area, and I know some people in Warwick who say the same, and, you know, this has been a long time coming. So what's important to us is that we answer any questions you have. We make any presentation you need. We have a radio frequency engineer from C Squared Systems, Martin Laban. We have Jesse Moreno, the civil engineer for the project from Proterra. We worked very closely with Tom and Sean Henry in planning on this, and they guided us through the planning process, and they made, I think, a recommendation for approval for. So there's a similar zoning change application to Clegg Field, and that's about it. That's, that's our overview. And the city council that approved the RFP award to us in July, and went to planning in October, and here we are for the zoning amendment. So we look forward to what we hope is a favorable vote. And if there are any questions, if there's any of our experts that you'd like to speak with, I think, I'm happy to have them make a presentation. We have handouts as well, and I could hand those out right now. So, Mr. President, I guess it's at the pleasure of the council how you'd like us to proceed from here. Would you like those presentations done?
So any questions from members of the council for the applicant? Councilman Ricks?
Thank you. I would direct the question to the administration. So in broad strokes, this proposal is more or less similar to proposals for other cellphone towers on public land in Warwick?
Correct.
And it makes sense in general for Warwick to have these cellphone towers located on public land as opposed to, for example, broadly speaking and hypothetically, public land tends to be better than private land due to some of the different complications, neighborhood concerns that it can cause for this type of tower to be put up on public, on private land, right?
Correct.
Yeah. And also, the city has an added benefit here of negotiating for the rent, right?
That's right.
So effectively, it's a cellphone tower, which generally speaking serves people who live in Warwick or are using cellphone tow, using cellphone services in or around Warwick. And the city is actually receiving money for, for that and avoiding the problems of hypothetically, a similar tower going up on private land where the setbacks might not be so great, or other complications could arise, right?
That's right. But in addition to residents and just cellphone users, we learn through Clegg, when you involve all the other city departments, even like sewer and water departments benefit, the sewer has what they call a skater system, which is a wireless system, and that, you know, repeats and relays information with their sewer infrastructure, they can benefit from the tower, too. So we made sure to get their input on Clegg, and we're doing the same with this tower.
That's, that's fantastic. And similarly, you're satisfied with the terms that were negotiated as part of this rental?
Yeah. Yeah, Dan Gegan, before he retired, handled all of our cell tower negotiations and did research. Ryac had just recently renewed some, so we went to them to see what they're getting for their rates, and Dan was, he was able to get a lot, all of them to come up. So we're happy with that.
Excellent. Thank you. And thank you for everyone involved with this. I know that it's not a simple process at all. I know that, you know, there is the outreach to the community, there is negotiation involved, there's an extensive process here. So I'm certainly satisfied that all the parties did their due diligence from everything that I'm hearing. Thank you.
Do any of the members of the council have any questions for the applicant? Seeing none, is there anyone here to speak in support of the project? Is there anyone here to speak in support of the project? Are you in support of the project? Are you waiting for me to say the next part?
I am a property owner that bought us the proposed tower.
Are you here to speak against or in favor?
I'm against.
All right, one moment, then, please, sir. So seeing no one here to speak in support of the project, is there anyone here to speak against the project? And then just please state your name first on the microphone, and then have at it.
Yes, my name is Everett Griffiths. My wife and I have owned the property around Warner Brook, which is closest to where the proposed tower is being constructed. It is a well-known fact that these towers emit electric magnetic sensitives that are harmful to the health of people and children. There is also a child fine organization that is within about 100 organization that is within about 100 feet of where this tower is being constructed. I have flyers and information of proof through the defender's news and views that taller people who have been harmed by these towers across the nation, people who have been within 900 feet of these towers in Idaho, New Jersey, Washington, have filed suit against companies like AT&amp;T and Verizon for injuries that they have received. It is also known that these towers are a hazard to the environment, that birds and wildlife animals such as deer are affected by their being erected. This tower is inside a public forest that has many pine trees, which are also known to lose their pine cones due to the radiation. I, my wife and I, who have lived there for over 60 years, are firmly against having this tower constructed and erected there.
Is there anyone else to speak in opposition to this proposed project? Is there anyone else to speak in opposition to this proposed project?
Hi, Council President. Are you going to have a third category? Okay, I'll wait for that.
All right, seeing no one else in opposition here to speak, is there anyone else who wishes to comment on this project?
Hello, Council again, Michelle Comar. I was pleased with the additional information the applicant provided at the meeting regarding potential setbacks from Warner Brook or Bucky Brook, and they're outside of the 100-year flood plain. But there is a concern in our community overall about tree clearing. And this isn't shown on any of their plans. There's no tree line. There's no limit of disturbance. So we don't know how much of the property they're disturbing, how many trees they're taking down. I have a couple more questions, and you can ask the applicant all at once, maybe. So they're asking for some deviations from our zoning ordinance. One is the maximum height of the tower, which the applicant stated is 135 feet. What is the maximum by zoning? And why does this tower have to be higher? The other question is, the ordinance speaks to no other cell phone tower within two miles. And there's one being constructed. I remember it was before the council in Canemecat. I don't know if that's within two miles or not. And maybe we need to look at our ordinance since the applicant stated we need more towers. Maybe that two miles should be closer, more lenient, so they can get enough service towers in the area. The other thing I was going to ask is specifically, because I live in Warwick, and I get messages on my cell phone, I have Verizon service, that searching for Wi-Fi, that might go on for half a day, a day. And so I'll have to drive to another area to try to get Wi-Fi service on my phone. Sometimes my calls are dropped. I don't know what I've missed, why those calls are dropped. So I'd like to ask Verizon if they have a master plan to improve the service in Warwick. I can drive around the city. I can tell you the holes, the dead spots. I understand Warwick Neck has some telephone technology on poles that help improve the service. I hope that's available all over the city. It's needed where I live, which is a mile south of Tuxit Village. So I hope the applicant will remember all my questions or the planning director, your preference, Council President, to address these questions, concerns.
Dealist's choice, applicant.
I'd like to take one of them, because we did this with Clegg with tree clearing, is require the applicant to mark all the trees that would be removed prior to site work. And we had a pre-construction site meeting to figure that out. I just quickly kind of used a graphic on my computer. It's a 60-foot-by-60-foot lease area. And just judging by the large canopies of the pine estrobis there, there's only a handful of trees that have to come out for that particular area, but there might be more, obviously, to get to it. The other questions, really, I'd like to punt to the applicant.
Okay, thank you, Director Kravitz. So I'd like to propose an amendment to the ordinance for zone change that a condition of approval would be that the trees would be marked and reviewed by, I don't know who in the city. I'd like to see the land trust review it, actually, with the applicant. This was not a stipulation that I recall in the planning board approval. I'd like to see it in the council approval. And I guess the rest of the questions are coming from the applicant. Council Press, thank you.
Yes, so we did do a, what's referred to as a NEPA study, a National Environmental Policy Act study, which we have to do due to RFCC licensing. It's required that we do a NEPA report for cell towers, and that contacts Rhode Island Historic, Fish and Wildlife, the tribal interests. And there was no adverse impact from that study that we had done. Yes, we will mark the trees there for the planning office to view before we start work, but we did find the area we are putting the tower does happen to have a good-sized cleared area. I would say about the size of this floor here that your rectangular table is in. And so we are going to use that location for the center of the tower to minimize tree removal. And on the RF permissions, that's, you know, that's been superseded by FCC regulations and under federal law. That's not something that can enter into the decision-making process. Oh, and on the height, yeah, we're 135 feet. I think the, we're 135 feet high. By the way, there's no marking or lighting required, no lights, no red and white paint, no red lights, no white lights because of proximity of TF Green, no lighting. But yeah, I think the height in the A-10 zone residence might be 35 feet, as typical for single-family homes. But obviously, the high height is necessary for the cell towers, and the ordinance does provide for higher heights with additional setbacks. And through this amendment process, we're able to achieve that higher height. And, you know, we're a little over, a little under two miles from Clegg Field, but we need this site. It's the right site, and cell towers are getting closer together. We're like one and a half miles at this point in time. But we do have a radio frequency engineer that can speak to anything else along the lines of radio frequency coverage, filling this gap, anything along those lines, if you'd like.
There's just one other question that didn't get answered about what is, maybe I didn't explain it clearly. What is the area around the cell tower that we expect to have improved Wi-Fi, computer, and cell phone service?
The area, well, I mean, we're seeking if the towers are approximately two miles apart. This site should cover approximately, you know, a mile and a half. There is some overlap between the towers. And whichever tower has the best signal in a particular area will pick up the cell phone call. So any wireless device that is subscribed from Verizon Wireless or one of the other major wireless carriers will see improvement if they're operated on those wireless carriers' frequency bands.
Those are, I thank you for the answers. I think going forward, when the city council has an open bid for use of public land, it's a project like this, because I think people showed up with more concerns at the planning board meeting. I didn't attend, but I heard that. I think to put feelers out first, if this is something that's going to be accepted by the community or not before we get to the stage where we're this far and then before our city council. And I'm not just talking about the people within the radius map, but in general. And I think these cell phone companies should do more master planning because there is a cell tower in Canemecat, kind of slow in getting that constructed and operational. But to work with the city and find out where the dead zones are and be proactive in identifying locations. They might not all be public lands. But I think that would be something worthwhile for better communication, emergency services as well in our city. I thank you.
If I may, address one or two points quickly. There was notice given to all the surrounding area residences at the time when those planning board meetings were out. As Mr. Valenari had pointed out, there was a recent article in the paper about the dead zone or cell hell zone. This is one of the reasons why this tower is going where it needs to go. We are trying to accommodate a number of people that's in an area in which cell phones are not being serviced properly because the coverage is not there. The cell phone is the most pervasive unit of accepting internet connection, one of the most important aspects about life in 2025. We're trying to help the situation. I understand there's concerns, but the concerns about the frequency and whatnot have been addressed by cell phones for more than 30 years. At this point, I would ask the council to give us a favorable approval on this. Thank you.
Is there anyone else here to speak, neither in support nor opposition, basically, that third category?
I'm listening to this gentleman here.
Sir, you have to identify yourself.
I'm sorry?
You have to identify yourself. The sonographer is typing up what you're saying, but she doesn't know who you are. You have to state who you are.
Yeah, I was speaking previous. I said I identified myself before. I'm Everett Griffiths. I own the property that is closest to the tower that's going to be built. Just these brochures that I have here from Defender are fact. There's a lady right here that has suffered 51 strokes from the radiation that these towers emit. And this is a serious thing. I don't know why I don't see other neighbors from my neighborhood here tonight joining us against this. And cell phones can operate fine without a tower of this capacity in our neighborhood. Thank you.
Is there anyone else here to speak on this project? See, now, do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
Mr. Chairman, I have a couple of questions to ask.
Are you all right with the public hearing getting closed, and then you can ask the questions?
Sure, that's fine.
So a motion made by Councilman Foley, seconded by Councilman Ricks. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Any abstentions? All right, so the public hearing is now closed. So Councilman Lattister?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Whichever gentleman from the tower would like to answer the question. The question or questions that I have are related to the health issues that the gentleman prior to you talked about. So what say you on that?
Well, I would direct the gentleman to the FCC website. I do have materials here I could share with him from that website, where they provide information to the public on health concerns, not just from the towers, but from the users of the handheld devices. But the FCC has determined that so long as these companies are operating within their licensed frequency bands and their power limitations and their number of channels, that there is no adverse health effect to the public. And that's an FCC, how should I say this, strictly controlled issue. And I can think of no instance where anyone has gone to the FCC and said, I'm concerned that, you know, this cell carrier is operating at a higher power wattage than they should be. But the FCC would be the course for somebody to seek out. And that would be the only way for anyone to pursue any such concern. But Telecom Act from 1996 has indicated that no health concerns is something that, I think you've heard this before, counselor, not to enter into the state and local government decision-making process.
So you say that there's FCC requirements and someone else for power, or whatever the terminology is. So how often do these towers get inspected to make sure that those transmissions, if you will, are remaining at the levels that they're supposed to?
They don't. The FCC issues our licenses, and we operate within those licenses. We're not permitted to violate it. There's no reason why we would. We have a certain power level we're allowed to operate at with the various frequencies, and that's how we operate. And we could submit the licenses from the FCC website, which contain that information, if you'd like, for the record.
Okay. The other question I have is for Director Kravitz. Director, Ms. Comar had asked about trees, and you had talked about trees being red-tagged or something of that nature there. That's required in what we're talking about here?
No, but that would be an appropriate ask to do that, yeah.
So when you say inappropriate ask, as in an amendment to this?
Yeah, you could, you could, you could do it that way as a condition, that at the pre-construction meeting, all the trees are marked that are going to come down. And having someone from the land trust probably would be a good person there.
Okay, you have no objections to that?
No, no, Jane, the chairwoman, she's great. She'd be good to work with, with the applicant.
So through the chair to the solicitor, could you give me the language for an amendment for what Mr. Kravitz has just alluded to?
I'm going to need a second, but you can continue any conversation, and hopefully we can get that to you quickly.
You can work on that? And that's all. I'll rely on my closing comments for a bit after.
Councilman Ricks?
Thank you, President. What I hope is a brief question to the applicant. So I'm looking at the website of the American Cancer Society, and it's my understanding that mobile phone and internet signals the electromagnetic wavelength is of a lower frequency than the visible light spectrum and is considered non-idizing radiation, correct?
We're going to ask our RF engineer, Martin Lavin, to come to the microphone and answer that.
Thank you.
Martin Lavin, Senior RF Engineer, C Squared Systems. Sorry, Martin Lavin, Senior RF Engineer, C Squared Systems.
Thank you. My question was, the types of signals that would be used by this tower are of a lower frequency than the visible light spectrum and considered to be non-idizing, correct?
Yes, these are much, much Yes, these are much, much lower than, excuse me, visible light and are non-ionizing.
And if this tower were to be instead sending out the types of wavelengths that would be iodizing radiation, those aren't the types of wavelengths that would be useful at all for cell phones or internet, right?
Those are not used for communication, though.
Right. That's what I thought. So I suppose, if I may, President, just have a brief comment. I'm not a scientist. I'm not a doctor. I'm not ruling out any possibility that there might be some people out there who might have an adverse health effect as a result of a cellphone tower. I cannot rule that out with certainty because I don't have that expertise. And there are rare conditions out there. I've heard about many different rare conditions where things that are not at all harmful to the average person might be harmful to some particular people. But I suppose that, and I don't mean to be cavalier at all about this, I don't mean to belittle any condition, but I would suggest that if someone is experiencing adverse health effects due to being too close to a cellphone tower, then one has to make a decision as to where they want to live, and it might not be the best idea to live in a city. As it is, there are many cellphone towers already in Warwick. That's all my comments. Thank you.
Any other members of the council who haven't spoken yet wish to speak? Councilman Lattiser?
Thank you, Mr. President. One question to the tower folks. Is this going to be a 5G service or 4G?
Martin Lavin, Senior RF Engineer, C-Squared Systems again. It would be supporting 4G and 5G, yes.
It would be what, please?
Supporting 4G and 5G.
Four and five?
Four and five, yes.
So are you open for discussion now, Mr. President, or should we wait for the amendment? Or I'm ready to give you my spiel on it.
Could I make one, a couple of questions? Councilman Lattiser, if you don't mind?
Nope, not at all.
Councilman Napa?
Just a couple of questions relative to your explanation that towers are never inspected, like ever, if you could come forth. Whomever is appropriate to answer that question. The question was posed, when towers are inspected. The answer was never. That's a pretty definitive answer. So can we maybe unpack that a little bit, that we put these up and we?
Yeah, so if there were a concern that...
Please speak into the mic.
Oh, thank you, Mr. President. So is this for structural purposes, if you're referring to that as well, to the safety of the tower?
I was more referring to your license to operate within a certain power scope.
That's right.
We're just assuming that that's going to operate flawlessly in perpetuity? No one ever double-checks to make sure that the infrastructure within that cell tower is operating correctly, that it doesn't go off-kilter and start drawing more power, start drawing less? You operate then outside the bounds of your licenser? That's never inspected?
Only if there were a determined typically concern over interference by the users of the cell tower whose frequency bands are very close to each other. Or in instances where the cellular antennas are, say, on a building, and they're actually, to some degree, on the roof of that building on the same horizontal plane and pointing at each other. If the carriers can't work that out amongst themselves, they would bring in the FCC for that purpose. But for RF emissions purposes, I'm not aware of a procedure where the FCC does not require the carriers to prove that they're meeting the limitations of their license. They've got a license. They have to operate at that power level. There's no reason for them to go over it. There's no benefit to that.
Not to say that any party would be culpable in doing that intentionally, but equipment malfunctions, it just befuddles me that there's no routine check yearly, biannually.
Those, that equipment is highly monitored. The Network Operations Center, but yes, they do have technicians go out.
That's, yeah, that's what I'm referring to.
Oh, yes, absolutely. Technicians do visit the sites once or twice a year. And there are annual inspections by the carriers, of course. I thought you meant by FCC personnel.
No, no, not by the FCC, but I think...
Oh, I see. Oh, yeah, of course, yes.
The never language was a little off-putting.
Oh, yeah, my misunderstanding.
Okay. Thank you. That's all.
So Council Solicitor?
Thank you, Mr. President. After conferring with the city planner, the clarification that an amendment that Councilman Lattiser may be seeking to offer would read the following. We would be adding a condition of approval that would be new language inserted as number five, following line 39. The language would be, "On the condition that any trees to be removed shall be marked prior to and discussed at a preconstruction meeting, at which a Land Trust member shall be invited to attend and participate." To the applicants, is that, do you have thoughts on that language?
We would have no, we would have no opposition to that, Solicitor.
Thank you. Member of the council?
Council, any issues with that language? So is there a motion pending?
I'd make a motion for the amendment as described by the city solicitor.
Second. Motion made by Councilman Lattiser, seconded by Councilman Muto. Any further discussion on the motion? Clerk will call the roll on the proposed amendment.
Mr. Snappy?
Yes.
Mr. DeLuise?
Yes.
Mr. Foley?
Yes.
Mr. Gephardt?
Yes.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Mr. Lattiser?
Yes.
Mr. Muto?
Yes.
Mr. Nappa?
Yes.
Mr. Ricks?
Yes.
Nine yes, two amend.
So this now stands before us as amended. Are there any further questions or comments? Councilman Lattiser?
Just some comments, Mr. President. So this is an area that, obviously, it's my ward, and it's in close proximity to where I live. And I can share with you, for the 20 years that I've lived in that area, there have been consistent, what I call, dead zones on Warwick Neck Avenue. There's at least three. There's at least three on West Shaw Road, heading from Warwick Neck Avenue, heading north. And it's in that entire circumference of areas. It is a habitual complaint that I get quite often about the lack of cell service in that area. In addition to that, the Warwick Fire Chief has also expressed that it would be a significant benefit to them with communication lapses or gaps, whatever the fancy technology terms are, if this tower were erected and Verizon had that communication on there. I spent a fair amount of time speaking with Director Kravitz on this and others, and am very comfortable with the rental fee that's going to be paid for about 3,600 square feet of space land. That's in the amount of $2,000 a year, and every year that increases by 2%. The first lease is a five-year lease renewable on five. That is a very fair number for .08 acres of land, when in the city of Warwick, an acre of land runs about $100,000. This is also in the area that is used by DPW. They use that for the compost area, et cetera, et cetera. The points about the visibility, I think, are really important because unless you're up 100 feet or you're standing back miles, you're probably not even going to see this tower. So it's not going to be a visual nuisance to the neighbors that are living in close proximity. So I would respectfully request favorable action on this, and I will move favorable action as amended.
Is there a second? Second by Councilman Ricks, Councilman Foley, Councilman Napa. Are there any questions or comments on this?
Actually, just a clarification. Did you say it's 2,000 a year?
A month, sorry.
A month, okay.
If I said a year...
You did say a year, and I was like...
Sorry, 2,000 per month.
I was about to outbid Verizon on this one.
You can still try. I'm taking offers.
Clerk will call the roll.
Mr. Snappy?
Yes.
Mr. DeLuise?
Yes.
Mr. Foley?
Yes.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Mr. Lattiser?
Yes.
Mr. Muto?
Yes.
Mr. Nappa?
Yes.
Mr. Ricks?
Yes.
Nine yes, first pass.
Thank you for that clarification, Councilman.
All right, this stands. First passage approved as amended. Thank you. Next, we have PCO 2-25, an ordinance amending Appendix A zoning ordinance of the city of Warwick to expand the geographical area in which retail sales of marijuana and related products can occur. Thousand Lakes LLC, petitioner 319 Bald Hill Road, assessors plat 273 lot 481. Same procedure as last time. First, we hear from the applicant, and then we'll take questions from the council, then we'll hear from supporters of the project, we'll hear from those against the project, we'll hear from everyone else, and we'll seek to close the public meeting, and then the council will discuss the matter further. So, City Ward?
This one's pretty simple. I can just throw it right to the applicant.
All right, applicant?
Thank you, staff. Thank you, Council President and members of the Honorable Council. Attorney Joseph Brennan, on behalf of the applicant, Thousand Lakes. So what you have before you, I'll kind of go through three things. First is what exists today. So already in the ordinance for the city of Warwick, the use code 511 is for retail sales of marijuana and marijuana-related products. There's a footnote that allows, in a general business zone, for this use, that footnote states that it's only allowed within selected areas of a general business zone district along Route 2, between and including the intersections of Route 113. That's where the Wendy's is, the old Dunkin' Donuts, along Bald Hill, and then going all the way down Bald Hill to Coeset Road, where currently there is a marijuana facility at that location. So what we're looking for, we're looking to take it from Route 113, where the Wendy's is, and just extend it north about 3/4 of a mile to the West Natick Road intersection, where the new Raising Canes is going, and...
Sorry, Attorney Brennan, for, I gotta interrupt you, and it's my fault, not yours. This was moved by the committee for public comment. Do we have a motion to open public comment?
If it may please the President, move open public comments.
Motion made by Councilman Ricks, seconded by Councilman Foley. All in favor?
Aye.
All against? Any objection or abstentions? And any objection to including the remarks made thus far as part of the record?
So moved.
All right. So, carry on. My apologies again.
Thank you, Council President. No problem. I appreciate the formalities. So what we're looking to do is extend it that 3/4 of a mile to the north to that intersection at West Natick Road, up and including that. So now the third and last thing, the reason why we're doing this. So through the state legislature, when the city of Warwick developed this and talking with the planning department, they didn't think that it would just be one marijuana facility that could go there. They anticipated a couple, a few, I don't know the exact number, I won't quote them on that. But through state law, what came down after that, which the city did not know when they developed this ordinance here and this footnote, was that you can't have more than one marijuana facility within a mile of each other. So you have to take, go from Coeset, and you lose a full mile. And then additionally, you can't have a marijuana facility within 1,000 feet of a school. Tollgate High School is right there, which takes away, and their property is very large. It's larger than you think when you look at it on a map. And so then you lose a lot of property there. And then the final reason is Bald Hill Road has a lot of retail establishments, and I do a lot of leases for people. And in those leases with those big retail establishments, there's usually footnotes on the back that have restricted uses because certain large, big-box tenants won't come into that retail center if certain uses are there. That ranges from adult stores to marijuana and so on. So the reason why we're asking for this change is because we need, that will allow us an ability for, at that intersection, the applicant has a property under contract to hopefully purchase, in which case he would be able to develop a retail marijuana sales at that location. Of course, that's always pending state licenses, because when you do apply for them, it's no guarantee from the state. You have to apply, and then it's a lottery system. So even if the council were to approve this tonight, it doesn't mean one is definitively going in. It means you're just giving one a gambling chance at a lottery to come in. So with that said, that concludes my presentation on it. If the council has any questions for me that I can answer. I also do have the applicant here, but that really is the whole thing. It's just that simple word change in that footnote to move the street up about 3/4 of a mile. Thank you.
Any questions from members of the council? All right. Anyone here to speak in support of the proposal? Anyone here to speak in support of the proposal? Anyone here to speak in support of the proposal? Anyone here to speak against the proposal? Anyone here to speak against the proposal?
In, Sheridan. In general, I object to any more marijuana shops in the city. And we do have, as the gentleman mentioned, we do have a very busy shop at the intersection in front of Lowe's. And you're only another mile away. I mean, has the council given consideration to how many we need in the city? So I mean, I just don't think on Post Road or on Bald Hill Road, we need another, or, excuse me, on Route 2, we need another shop. Thank you.
Is anyone else here to speak in opposition to the project? Anyone else here to speak in opposition to the project? Is anyone else here to speak in opposition to the project? Is anyone else here to speak on the project in general? Anyone else here to speak on the project? Is anyone else here to speak on the project? Seeing none, do we have a motion to close the public hearing? Motion made by Councilman Gephardt. Is there a second? Seconded by Councilman Lattiser. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Any abstentions? The public hearing is now closed. Any further questions or comments from members of the council? Councilman Ricks?
Thank you. Without being presumptuous, on behalf of the Councilman of Ward 8, I believe that we previously had a public meeting in which it was discussed that of the various areas of the city, it seems most appropriate for this type of retail operation to be located in the area of Bald Hill Road. I would still agree with that assessment. I think that this is very much consistent with that idea. And I would push back a little bit on any suggestion that it be a wise idea to spread these marijuana retail facilities throughout the city as opposed to having them in a particular designated area that is more suited for these types of retail sales. Thank you.
Any other members of the council wish to speak on this? All right, seeing none, is there a motion in favor of this? Councilman Gephardt, any seconds? Councilman Foley? Is a motion made and seconded? Any further questions or comments? Seeing none, clerk will call the roll.
Mr. Snappy?
Yes.
Mr. DeLuise?
Yes.
Mr. Foley?
Yes.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Mr. Lattiser?
No.
Mr. Muto?
No.
Mr. Nappa?
Yes.
Mr. Ricks?
Yes.
Eight yes, one no, first passage.
Thank you.
Next, we have PCO 3-25, an ordinance amending the zoning ordinance of the city of Warwick. Sprague Covington LLC, applicant 112 Old Warwick Avenue, assessors plat 351 lot 234. This was heard in public properties and moved for public hearing. Do we have a motion?
Planning, excuse me, committee recommends opening public hearing, and I would defer to the Councilman of Ward 5 as to the motion.
Make a motion to open a public hearing.
Is there a second? Seconded by Councilman Ricks. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Any abstentions? So the public hearing stands open. Director Kravitz?
Yes, Tom Kravitz, City Plan Director. In your memorandum for this application, the planning board approved this project on December 11th at that meeting. Initially, when this property hit the market, some of the proposals, informally, we were seeing were higher in unit count. We weren't crazy about that, given the close proximity to Bucky Brook. This application came down from, some of the numbers were up above 20 units. This is down to 16. It's pulled away from the river. And it's, it's a nice project. The planning board liked it. The vote was unanimous. And coming out of it, there'll even be means for public access, because the Bucky Brook Coalition does fish counting there, and so that, that will continue into the future. This project has to come back to the planning board after they get their various state permits from DEM. So we will see it again at, at the planning board.
Thank you, Council President and members of the Honorable Counsel. Attorney Joseph Brennan on behalf of the applicant, Sprague Covington. Thank you to the staff. I won't repeat any of those things unnecessarily to waste any time, but the applicant is looking to propose a 16-unit development. They would be all two-bedroom units at market rate. As the staff had said, many proposals were, were much larger, and based on the size, the acreage is 2.47 acres of land. So when you spread it out, even though we're still not using a lot of the land, we, we are, we're under the density that's required versus the zone change. I know you'll see in your ordinance that it says general business planned district residential with waivers, but I would state that that waiver is only because when you change to a, a PDR zone, the ordinance requires that a commercial use be set back 40 feet from the overlay, and out of an abundance of caution and working with planning, they kind of consider that the parking areas and landscape as part of that, but none of the building structures would end up actually being within that zone. So that's really the only waiver. Besides that, the project is in total conformance with the zoning ordinance, but we just need, do you get that zone change through the council? Because multifamily units of this size just aren't allowed in the ordinance, no matter how you look at it, no matter how you could ever finagle it. So that's the reason that we're here before you today. I do have the applicant and the engineer here, if there were any questions that I couldn't answer for the council.
Any questions from the council? Is there anyone here to speak in support of the proposal? Is there anyone here to speak in support of the proposal? Is there anyone here to speak in support of the proposal? Is there anyone here to speak against the proposal? Is there anyone here to speak against the proposal? Is there anyone here to speak against the proposal? Is there anyone here to speak about the proposal in general? Is there anyone here to speak about the proposal? Is there anyone here to speak about the proposal? All right, seeing none, do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Lattiser, seconded by Councilman Muto. All in favor of closing the public hearing?
Aye.
Aye. All against? Any abstentions? All right, public hearing stands closed. Is there any further questions or comments from members of the council? Councilman Gettner.
I'll just say briefly, this looks to be a fine project by a very responsible developer, and we're grateful for the investment in the city.
Any other further questions or comments from members of the council? Councilman Lattiser.
Yes, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have become well acquainted with this developer in my 24 years as Chair, Vice Chair of the Contractors Registration Board. Very high-quality builder, very conscientious in the work that he does, and I've, I've never received a complaint regarding anything or any work that he's done. This particular property has been one of the pain in the neck properties that I've had since I've been on the city council. Numerous complaints about the property over the years. It became a graveyard for, you name it, trucks and cars and Zambodis and whatever, but it was, it was all over there, abandoned trailers, et cetera. Spent a lot of time with minimum housing folks getting service done on that particular property. So this development is really a breath of fresh air. It's going to have minimal impact on traffic in that particular area. There's a dead-end street over there now where the Warwick Bridge used to be, or whatever they called it. So in any event, I think this is a very welcome and a very good addition to Ward 5, and I would respectfully request favorable action.
Any further questions or comments from members of the council? Man Ricks.
Thank you. A question to the administration and the applicant's attorney. So constituent of mine who was involved with some questions on this earlier, Mr. Michael Zarim. I believe that he was participating in his role as the president of the Bucky Brook Coalition, and it's my understanding that he was satisfied as to the public access to Bucky Brook. So I wanted to make sure to state that on the record. He also had kind of a more general question or concern relating to the language in the proposed ordinance about the phrase general business planned district residential abbreviation GB PDR. So for us to just get clarification onto the record here at the city council meeting, public record, the intent is that this be the general business planned district residential overlay, and GB PDR overlay is the exact same thing as GB PDR, correct?
Right. Yes, I spoke to Mr. Zarim today. He called me. I had that same conversation with him. If the council wanted to amend it, to put in the language on line 27 where it would say planned district residential overlay, I have no objection to that. That's perfectly fine, but when you even look through the Warwick ordinance, it, sometimes it says PDR, sometimes it says PDR overlay, but it all does mean the same thing.
Very good. Glad that we could just make sure that that was clear on the record. That's all. Thank you.
Any further, oh, Councilman Foley. Motion made by Councilman Foley, seconded by Councilman Lattiser. Any further discussion? Seeing none, clerk can call the roll.
Mr. Snappy.
Yes.
Mr. DeLuise.
Yes.
Mr. Foley.
Yes.
Mr. Gettner.
Yes.
Mr. Kirby.
Yes.
Mr. Lattiser.
Yes.
Mr. Muto.
Yes.
Mr. Napa.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
So unless there's any objection, we can jump to PCR 15-25, resolution of the General Assembly requesting authorization of a special election of the voters of the City of Warwick to revoke authority for further issuances of indebtedness pursuant to the $350 million authorization for the construction of two new high schools, and that's intergovernmental. So Councilman Gettner?
The committee, just basically due to time, moved this forward with no recommendation.
All right, so public comment concluded on this item, so now all we have is any questions or comments from members of the council. I know Councilman Lattiser had been waiting to speak on this, so Councilman Lattiser?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. First, I apologize to the folks that were here waiting for so long and ultimately had to leave. I want to point out a few things before I get into my general comments. One of the things discussed with the Intergovernmental Committee was that we've already spent $13 to $15 million, and that would essentially be wasted if this resolution were to pass. I'd also point out that if this resolution doesn't pass, that you could be facing anywheres from 23 to as much as $40 million, or who knows how much of additional monies up and beyond the $350 million. The $350 million is a cap. That was a cap. It was also said in committee that there's been thousands of hours, and there was delays because of the council doing their due diligence to get a qualifying number to build these two schools. During that time, I doubt very much that everybody was sitting on their hands back at home doing nothing. They may not have had shovels in the ground, but that had nothing to do with the city council doing its due diligence. So I'm sure the conceptual drafting and drawing and changes, et cetera, et cetera, were, were ongoing too. So to make it sound as though this project is costing millions of dollars more because of that makes no sense. Back in February of 2022, I said at that time, those schools couldn't be built for $350 million. Right up to the election time, the school department had continually been saying they could. We can build them. We can do it for $350 million. Within a month or so after that election, and after the voters approved what they were presented, what they were sold for $350 million, the school department comes back and says, we don't think we can do them for $350 million. We're going to need to revisit this. Fast forward to August of 2024, I sat in five and a half hours of meeting testimony from the building committee with the four contractors that had bid the project. Four of them. All four of them said, we think we can do it for $350 million, but we're going to have to make some serious cuts. We're going to cut this, we're going to cut that. One of the things that shocked me was when they said, we have to cut glass. We're going to cut glass windows. That was one of the big sell jobs that was presented to the voters, that we're going to have these new bright windows. We got windows now we can't even see out of. They still said, we can do it for 350. In the September meeting, following that meeting, they still said they can do it for 350. But, you know, we're going to continue with value engineering. Value engineering was a term that was developed back in World War II, and that term was to achieve a lesser cost, and I'm going to quote, with functionality and functionality of originally planned. That's not what's happening here. We don't, we're not getting anything near what we were sold. By their own admission, Tollgate is 75% different than what was presented to the voters. But yet, we have this problem that, in addition to all of these cuts, which are 100,000 square feet of space, you heard that testified earlier, 100,000 square feet of space. The current cost, as I understand, to build these two schools today is $764 a square foot. That's, you're shaking your head, but that's the number that I understood. Well, go to the mic and correct me on what the square footage is, but you don't even need to. The point is, multiply that number, whether it's 600 or 700, times 100,000 square feet. Solar panels, gone. AC, big deal. That was a big deal. We're going to have all air conditioning buildings. Now it's air tempered. Air tempered is just as good as AC. Then why didn't you sell that in the first place? The lower ceilings, we have narrower corridors, we have smaller gyms, smaller auditoriums, we have less bleachers in the gym. Mr. Tester said at one of the meetings, the committee meetings, that's okay, the kids can sit on the floor. We've removed acres of parking. It was recently said that we eliminated another acre of asphalt, and that's going to save a lot of money. That's parking, community rooms, sports fields. These things have all changed. And these things, in addition to these deductions, reductions, we're now facing $23 million at today's numbers. It was 35 or 38, now it's down to 23. Maybe it's going to go a little bit less. We still don't know what we're getting for schools. We still don't know what we're going to end up with after all the cuts. We have, still, we don't have a definitive number as to what it's going to cost. If you can't get it down lower than $23 million more, who's paying the $23 million? That's, I think, a significant question. Mr. Tester has also stated at the building committee meetings and on the school committee meetings, $350 million, not a dollar more, not one dollar more. This was testified numerous times. School committee member, Ms. Hazelwood, testified at one of the school committee meetings, if we can't build these two schools fairly close to what was presented for very close to $350 million, then I agree, it should go back for a new vote. That was said at a school committee meeting. We have, right now, we're facing a $9 million financial deficit in the school department in addition to potentially $23 million more in the cost of these schools. We don't know where this is going to end up with the $9 million deficit. As a matter of fact, we don't know where we're going to end up with the deficit from 2024. Oh, sorry, yes, 2024. 2026 is projected to be even worse. This is compounding, and this is adding to the financial burden that is going to end up on the tax rolls. Mr. Cushman really present, recently presented an issue about the bond rating, that the bond rating, if this $9 million deficit comes to be, would have a negative impact on the bond rating. If the bond rating drops, it is going to give us a significant increased cost in these two schools. To maneuver the numbers in such a manner that you're going to come out with a reasonably close budget in 2025, maybe $3 million or so in deficit, to only have it compounded in '26, or make it worse in '26, so you can maybe attract a better rate on the bond rating, let me tell you something, the bond people are very well aware of what's going on. The people that are invested into these bonds, the people that are buying these bonds, potentially buying these bonds, they're very well aware of what's going on. They're very well aware of the financial issues that are facing us. This is something that is hugely significantly different than what was sold. You can say that, well, there was no really presentation. Yeah, there were. I went to several of them. You had these big giant boards all over the place. You're talking about all this fluff, all the fancy stuff that's going to be, the 21st century buildings, air condition, et cetera, et cetera, huge outdoor areas. That has all changed, and it's changed to the tune of perhaps 50, 60 million dollars or more in cuts, and looking to hit the taxpayers for another $23 million or more in additional monies. That is wrong. That is wrong. You can say, well, they already voted.
You've got one minute, Councilman.
They voted on something totally, completely different than what they're getting. And yes, I've been quoted about the Mercedes versus the Chevy. Exactly. I've said it numerous times. I have talked about bait and switch. What's bait and switch? Bait and switch is sell them one thing and deliver something else. That's called bait and switch. I am very well aware about bait and switch. It was in my industry for years. This is something, in my opinion, needs to go back to the voters so they can vote on what they're really going to get in those two schools and what it's really going to cost. Thank you.
Any other members of the council wish to speak on this matter? Councilman Ricks.
Thank you, Council President. So first off, I think that it is a good thing that we are having this debate. This is what we are here for as a city council, is to debate these issues that are facing us as a city. So I'll get into my thinking on, on this now. First, the aspirational. So when it comes, so when it comes to some of the different comments that I've heard, perhaps the comments weren't quite intended to be taken in this way, but, well. perhaps the comments weren't quite intended to be taken in this way, but, well, this is how I interpret them. Comments such as, Warwick once had twenty thousand students. We once had double sessions. We once only had one high school while we had twenty thousand students. Well, I once had to eat ramen multiple times a week. That's not something to aspire to here. I don't think that any of us want to go back to those days. So what are we going to do about this moving forward? We want to have two high schools that we can be proud of. We already had a very extended debate, um, many meetings, many levels, on what the options realistically are, whether two high schools, one mega high school, what all those would look like, what ride would or would not allow us to do. So that debate has already been had. Not everyone is happy about that, but we had that debate, and I think that we came to the best outcome that realistically we could as a result of that very thorough, very extensive process. We then also had a measure on the ballot approved by the voters after many, many different public hearings and approvals at many different levels when it came to what these schools would look like and whether or not we could do it within the three hundred and fifty million. I think that Councilman Lattiser raises many valid points here, that he was calling this out years ago, that it would be very difficult, if not impossible, to get this done within three hundred and fifty million dollars. I know that he, I'm, I'm sure that he hoped that he could have been proven wrong. I sure, I sure hope that he was proven wrong as to that point. I think we all wanted to see this done within three hundred and fifty million dollars. Based on the presentation from the school committee and information that we've received, I think it is possible for them to get it down within the three hundred and fifty million dollars if some things go the right way. But I think we all have to acknowledge a real possibility that perhaps it's not possible to get the kinds of schools that we'd want to see within the three hundred and fifty million dollars. With that said, I think that everyone who was paying attention was also seeing that there were, of course, going to be changes made to these conceptual designs. Uh, in fact, I remember a very early meeting that I had with representatives of the school department where I was pointing out to them these very large open spaces, the rock wall, just different features of that nature. Why are we even including that in the presentation? I don't think that the voters are going to go for that. I think that if we show palaces, then we're going to alienate a lot of people who would otherwise be in favor of replacing the both schools. And lo and behold, when we take a look at the election results, it's, it actually tends to be the less affluent areas of the city that were the most skeptical and voted at the higher rate to reject that proposal for the new schools. With that said, that election in 2022, the results are in, it's basically fifty-nine to forty-one, with a majority of voters from every single one of the nine wards supporting the new schools. So when it comes to this resolution in particular, I don't think that having a special election here is appropriate as a matter of effectively trying to redo the process here. I think that if playing this out, if the voters were to approve, approve that referendum, that is to revoke the previous spending authorization, then there would always be questions about whether that special election is actually representative. There, there are certainly reasons why special elections are reserved for very rare occasions. I don't think that this is the right reason for having a special election as the solution here. But if on the other hand, we have the special election, and then, okay, special election results are in, voters want to move ahead with new schools, we'd only have succeeded in wasting some serious time here during which perhaps we no longer have that same guaranteed maximum price. Perhaps it's all that much harder, if not, uh, if not impossible, for us to meet those various contingencies on the timeline, to get those additional tens and tens of millions of dollars in state aid, state reimbursement and matching funds. So when looking at, realistically, what are the other options here, even if we were all in agreement that we need to stop the process here, what do those other options actually look like? All the other options look a heck of a lot worse than moving forward as it is right now. That's, that's my opinion. I don't mean to speak for other people. I know that other people have other opinions, of course. But simply because we stop the process of building these new high schools, that doesn't mean that stopping the process won't have its own costs. We still have to provide habitable buildings for the students, buildings that can legally be occupied. Pilgrim High School, I was commenting, as the chair commented, I've commented on occasions as well, that I remember all of the barrels in the hallways and the classrooms with the water dripping in. I graduated from Pilgrim in 2004. Of course, that's still going on. And I heard from another person on Facebook where someone who was criticizing replacing Pilgrim, because, oh, when I went to Pilgrim, they said, uh, back in the seventies, we had those barrels out in the hallway and the, in the classrooms too, to take in the water, and that was fine by us. We thought it was funny. That, that was her comment. And, you know, as a teenager, you see the world in one way, and then as a, as an adult, you realize that mold is a thing, and you have to wonder, we have a school that for decade after decade has water dripping in from the roof? What are we doing? What are we doing? This is madness. Of course, we need to replace that school. It was built, I don't know how they built it all of those decades ago, but they didn't build it very well in the first place. We're not talking about nineteen twenties, nineteen thirties era construction. We need to make sure that these new high schools are built properly.
Councilman, you've got one minute.
So for all of those reasons, and because the alternative here, even if we were to fix up the old schools, realistically, we're just throwing good money after bad. And if we let those schools fail, what's that solution going to be? Double sessions? Sending, no, 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 not double sessions. I'm sure that the realistic solution would look more like sending all of those students, spreading them out to neighborhood communities. What's that going to do to us in Warwick? What's that going to do to our funding with all of that money following all of those students while breaking up the community? I realize my time is up. Thank you.
Any other members of the council wish to speak on this? Councilman Gebhardt.
I'll just say very briefly, um, this, the, the, all the proceedings tonight really are very, this is very frustrating to me. I consider it completely outrageous that we are holding this forum tonight. I consider it completely outrageous that the, the school, uh, the superintendent, the assistant superintendent, teachers, the folks who should be working on these buildings to get them down under budget, the folks who should be working on getting the deficit down to, to a, a level that we can all accept as a city, um, because we know there's other factors at play, the folks who've been sitting with us every Friday or every other Friday to try to workshop through how we're going to navigate our way out of this situation, that they're all sitting here until 10 o'clock at night, not working on the buildings, not working on the deficit, answering questions that have been asked and answered and asked and answered, had been put to the voters, the vote has been taken, the results are here, I printed them out if anyone else wants to see them. The people have spoken. The, the horse has left the barn. What we have left to do now is to work together to move this forward, to get ourselves to a place where we can provide educational facilities for our students, that keeps our students in our district, that lowers the, the, the number of students who are going out of district, lowers our tuition payments that we're paying outrageously to other districts, that provides these kids with a place that they can learn, in a place they can be proud of, in a place that we have teachers with high morale and who want to come to work every day and do the best job they can for their students. And with that, Mr. President, I would offer a, a, move favorable, uh, move unfavorable action on this outrageous PCR.
Motion made. Is there a second on the motion? So Councilman Foley, and now is there any further discussion on the motion? Councilman Udo.
So the rest of you guys don't kill me. I just want to, um, you know, again, I'll, I'll echo what, uh, Councilman Rick said. You know, I do want to thank, you know, uh, Councilman Lattiser, uh, for really taking, taking some of this initiative. I know it's very unpopular, uh, but we do have a serious economic and financial crisis within our city. And, uh, his effort is to make us aware and keep pushing that forward. I will admit, you know, I, I voted November 22nd, uh, I voted against the schools, and I voted against the schools because, you know, I'm doing it in my own self-interest. I don't have children in the schools. You know, I'm going to plan on retiring. I'm trying to keep my taxes as low as possible. But overall, over the last few years, I've warmed up to them, uh, more and more as I've, I've spoken with families, spoken with, uh, administrators, mostly speaking with the teachers and the administrators within the schools. And, uh, I've had a change of heart when it comes to investing, uh, in some of the capital programs. Doesn't mean I'm, I'm not concerned. I am very concerned with the overage. Councilman Lattiser does raise a great point, which is, what do we do if we go over the three hundred and fifty million dollars? What do we do on the operating budgets? What do we do with some of the other finance challenges within our city? These are all valid questions. However, uh, one of my, forgetting all that, I'm going to be honest with you, is where do we go from here? And our options are not very pretty. So let's just say we move forward, uh, and we have another election and it gets turned down. I'm not sure if anyone has been reading up on some of the documents that are out there, but if anyone is familiar with the facilitioning assessments of the Warwick schools, uh, I'm going to, I'm going to ask the chairman, how many of our schools before some of the recent changes, forget about some of those elementary schools, how many schools are in fair and good condition?
Uh, please excuse me. Off the top of my head, I don't want to go on the record with a certain number, but I could tell you that it's, it's a very small number.
It's none.
Yeah.
It's none. Every what be, and I'm correcting myself with forgetting about the recent work of Oakland Beach and a few of these others that have not been reassessed. But before those recent works, we have not, we do not have one educational building in our city at the elementary, junior high or high school that has passed a physical assessment of good or fear. They are all poor, and even one of our elementary schools are basically recommended to basically be closed. We're not in, in good condition. Looking at the alternative without going forward with these two new schools and getting the reimbursement, we're looking at a hundred and seventy-six million dollars, give or take, with what is on the Warwick City taxpayers' dime. Looking at the scale of both of the schools, we're looking at, just, you know, amuse me on this part, but I, I'm a very visual person. I need to see, okay, what are we getting versus losing? And I was very shocked that we're going to give up a hundred thousand square, square feet. But then I looked at, what does Pilgrim look like today? It's two hundred and twenty-three thousand square feet. And what does the new school present? It's two hundred and twenty-two thousand square feet. I've spoken with the administrators and teachers. I, to be honest with you, I like the work that you guys are doing now, but I really trusted what the administrators in the school people said. Tollgate, same thing. Current Tollgate, including the, uh, career tech, is two hundred and fifty-two. Uh, the new building is two hundred and twenty-two plus the career tech. So apples to apple, size for size, square foot, you know, conceptually, I can see it. Now what happens if we don't build it? We still have two crappy high schools. And if anyone wants to see it, it's online. They go through pages. This was back in June of 2017, where they did a assessment on, on the two high schools, very detailed, and it was not very pretty. The estimated cost back in 2017, and I was going to do my little Excel here, and they rated this by critical, priority one, priority two, priority three, priority four, and total deficiencies. Pilgrim, estimated in 2017, Pilgrim remodeling was estimated at eighty million, one hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars. Tollgate was estimated at ninety million, six hundred and thirteen, back in 2017. All right, let's just use those numbers. Those numbers just happen to be about a hundred and seventy-five million dollars. So hypothetically, this goes away, we don't do anything. We're still on the hook to fix these two schools for approximately the same amount of money. And even worse, you know, it's probably going to cost us more. So for that reason, and just looking at it as an economic benefit and really a trade-off analysis, I'm, uh, against this, uh, this resolution. Thank you.
Any further questions or comments from members of the council? Councilman Nappo.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, just to be brief, Councilman Udo, excellent job laying out the financial aspects there. I'm not going to dig into that any deeper, but just to reiterate what some of my colleagues have said, we've already put this out to vote. Almost sixty percent of the public had approved it at three hundred and fifty. Now, at no time has anyone formally come forth and said, we need X dollars more. Now, whether or not that's the case at the end of the day, we don't know. Do I think that we need to hit the pedal a little bit and get a solid final number on the table? Yeah, because I think that's what all of the public has made very clear, and I think most of the council wants to know, what is this going to cost? So we can wrap this thing up. Now, I am opposed to this resolution because I support the school projects. I am on the side of the taxpayer that we want this done. I voted for it myself back in 2022. Now, having that final number will put some people at ease. I would request from the administration that we get some sort of new estimate or updated estimate as to what the tax implication may be. We can estimate bonds. I realize that we don't know what those bond ratings or final bond issuances may look like as far as interest goes, but an updated, uh, bond issuances may look like as far as interest goes, but an updated expectation of what the tax increase may be for the public, I think, would be helpful at this point. For members of the public who had questions relative to what is entailed in this project, I can say that Mr. Spiegel from Leftfield and his team have been incredibly forthcoming. I've asked some pretty hard questions and drilled them pretty well, and they've been very forthcoming with any information. So I would encourage anyone that has specific questions about the project's scope or in general, please direct it to them, and I assure you that they will be responsive. I get this feeling that there's this, like, underlying notion that the council has to now protect the taxpayers from themselves. And I find that to sort of undermine our tax base because I think it's ludicrous to say that our taxpayers and voters, at the time that they approved this resolution in 2022, did not have the foresight to think to themselves, well, construction budgets usually tend to inflate, this is probably not actually going to be 350 as presented, it's probably going to be different. And I think, I give more credit, I think, to the taxpayer to say, they understood that. They understood that what was presented conceptually was not ultimately going to be the project on the table. And that's what they approved. They approved 350 for how we can get it done for two new schools, whatever that may look like, and put faith in the school committee, the administration, and whomever they chose to hire to get that project done and deliver at 350. Now, 350 is the number that the mayor decides that that's where his top line is and that's all he's going to issue, so unless we get to 350, it's not happening, then that's the case, because that's what's on the table right now. We have a protection of a top end, because there's a guaranteed maximum contract that's going to be signed before it breaks ground, that Mr. Spiegel has provided a fair amount of clarity on. And that's our top end, unless we go back to the voter. So at this point, the project's not going forward unless we're at 350, because that's all we have approval for. So sending this back out to a vote to say, do we want it done at 350? Again, I think it undermines the voter, as everyone has said. It just, it's a futile effort to rehash what we've already seen and what we've heard as feedback from our constituents. So I have faith in our tax base that they had some foresight to know that the project was going to be changed on its face, there was going to be some increased costs, and hey, maybe we're not getting that rock wall. I would tend to believe that the Warwick public knew that in their gut. So we have an obligation to provide schools to our children and to our teachers so that they can educate our public, because without an educated populace, our society will inevitably fail. And if we don't have something that is functional to give to our kids and to provide to our teachers, then we're not going to do a very good job of keeping people in this city. And we've already started to see it. And as my constituents have pointed out, the alternative is going to cost us more. So at this point, we do have a top-end protection. It's 350. We've already approved that. So let's move forward, let's stay the course, let's figure it out, because after long conversations I've had and email exchanges and reviewing documents, I have much more faith in the design team that's worked incredibly hard, in the school department as far as getting this thing organized and being transparent. I think we can get it done for 350 for sure. It may not look exactly what we thought, but it's going to be a quality product that we can deliver to our students and our teachers. Thank you.
Any other members of the council? Councilman DeLuise.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to make three points, okay? First of all, I own a business, my cost of my raw materials are going up on a weekly basis, okay? So to predict the $350 million end product, it's a physical impossibility in my, okay, my opinion. But for them bound by a contract, they will have to cut in some areas if they're going to stay within that 350 million. The other thing is, what type of example are we going to set, okay? If the process, when people are trusted with electing, whether it's city officials, presidents, whether they're voting on bond issues, what message does it send if we have the power to just negate what the voters actually want? So I don't think it's a good precedent to set rules that, you know, that can be changed. You have an election, you have a vote, I mean, this, you know, the democratic process won't work. We don't live in Cuba. That's it.
Any other members of the council have any questions or comments?
No.
Oh, wow, we made it. So my own thoughts, I mean, they won't be a surprise to anyone. I think school committee member Testa pointed out, I was part of the group years ago now that was reviewing how would we do the high schools, if it would be one, if it would be two, where would we put them, how would we put them, if we would refurbish, which is actually what we were going to do until Ride told us we couldn't. And then we were tasked with then instead replacing. So this has been a long, drawn-out process, and it should have been a complete process. But just like you can't overturn an election that you don't like the results on, we can't overturn the result of a ballot question that we don't like the results on. This is not something that should be done. And this is going to make me feel old. Growing up, it was always find a way to make it work about everything, like, figure it out. That's what I grew up with, that's what I heard everyone else get told, that's what my parents' philosophy was. It seems that that changed with the years to any time the slightest wrinkle appears that people panic and act like the sky is falling. It's not. Just because the school department did their due diligence and warned us well in advance of the worst possible scenario does not mean the worst possible scenario is the only scenario. Just like how every time Peter Schaefer comes up to the mic and gives all the scenarios, because he's good at his job, from the good to the bad, the bad one is not the only one. There were more. But he presents all of the possibilities, because there are possibilities and everyone deserves to know about them. The school department has made us aware of those possibilities and, perhaps unsurprisingly, have improved the outlook dramatically, and Fogel's Well will continue to do so. So to presume that the sky is falling, that there's no chance for this to happen, is definitely premature, especially in light of the fact that people, as was mentioned by some of my colleagues, people neglect to realize the alternatives, or rather, the lack thereof. There aren't really alternatives, at least not practical ones. To not go forward would mean we say goodbye to the 55% reimbursement. So if your concern was, I don't want to spend that much money, the 350, 350 million, even though we're spending less than that, but for the purposes of the statement, I don't want to spend that money. It's like, okay, well, if we don't go forward, you'll be spending a lot more than that, because there won't be any reimbursement. Well, I'm not sure the project's going to work out that way. Okay. Bond projects are not a new phenomenon that came into being at this point in time in the world. This has been going on for decades. This process is not new to anyone. To pretend otherwise is a farce. Just because, again, the school department did it right and warned us of it rather than went through the whole project and then said, by the way, we spent more, sorry, that's not a reason to drag them through the mud and to go through all this pantomime just for nothing. It's a waste of everyone's time. I have no problem admiring and agreeing with the fact that due diligence should be made. I think there's a time and a place, and it's not here. The conditions of the schools are not new. I got a kid in the schools, I get reported back all the time. It's windy out, so we couldn't use the bridges in the high school. Okay. That should concern all of you. It's windy, so I can't use the structure the way it's meant to be used. That's a problem, fundamental problem, and it's not an isolated one, there are plenty. The solution for it was voted on and agreed to. If you want to ask yourselves, why is it over budget then? Again, bond projects are not new, construction costs escalating are not new. We met with Ride, as much as I have nothing but often bad things to say about them, Ride echoed what the school department and school committee have been saying. So you want to take that word for it? Fine. Ride said the same thing. The delay due to the council's due diligence efforts costs approximately 20 million. So was it wrong to do the diligence? Honestly, no. It was the right thing to do under the circumstances. But it is wrong to pretend like there weren't consequences. There were. So now, as we sit here and the project's estimated to be about 22 million over, with 17 million in contingency, and likely to go down less than 22 million, it's very disingenuous to pretend that we are on an ivory tower and had nothing to do with it. It's just, it's not true. It is wrong. Again, I don't think it's ill-intent that we did the due diligence, I don't regret it, it was smart, just the fact that it happened to echo, what we were told is a good thing. And for those that think that there's no possible way forward if it does happen to exceed the money and therefore we should all abandon shit now, that's just, again, premature, and you'll see that as I dock it something tonight, one of the reasons why it's premature. So, Councilman Gebhardt, you made a motion for unfavorable action. Therefore, a yes vote defeats the resolution. So clerk will call the roll, and again, a yes vote. Councilman DeLuise?
Mr. President, I just want to say one more thing for, of course, for you. Can we go back to the old math? No comment, just kidding.
All right, so clerk will call the roll on unfavorable action. Again, that means a yes vote defeats the resolution as proposed.
Do we need a second?
We had it seconded at the time.
Mr. Snappy?
Yes.
Mr. DeLuise?
Yes.
Mr. Foley?
Yes.
Mr. Gebhardt?
Yes.
Mr. Kirby?
No.
Mr. Lattiser?
No.
Mr. Udo?
Yes.
Mr. Napa?
Yes.
Mr. Ricks?
Yes.
Seven yes, two no. Motion fails. Well, it passes as unfavorable.
All right, so now we return back to our standard agenda. And then, to be clear, that means the resolution, PCR 15-25, was defeated. Now we have unfinished business, PCO 15-24, and ordinance clarifying the rehiring of municipal retirees on a limited basis without interrupting pension benefits. This is on behalf of the administration, this is second passage, Finance Committee. This is PCO 15-24, and ordinance clarifying the rehiring of municipal retirees on a limited basis without interrupting pension benefits. This is on behalf of the administration, and it's the second passage, and it's Finance Committee.
We move favorable action on PCO 15-24.
So committee recommended favorable action, and Councilman Lattiser has moved favorable action. Is there a second? Councilman Udo seconds. Are there any further questions or comments on PCO 15-24? Seeing none, clerk will call the roll. Yes.
Mr. Foley?
Yes.
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 All right, next, we have new business, PCR 13-25, a resolution in observance of Black History Month. This is Public Properties.
Thank you. So we skipped over this in committee, aside from the public comments, so that we could move forward with various other matters, including the various public hearings with the court reporter. So this is sponsored by myself.
And it's for discussion?
Pardon me, I got ahead of myself there. Committee recommends favorable action, and I'll move favorable action.
Motion made by Councilman Rick, seconded by Councilman Gebhardt, Councilman Ricks.
Thank you. Thank you. Sorry about getting ahead of myself there. So as the chair of the Public Properties, Land Use, and Community Affairs Committee, I think that it's important for us to recognize different months of significance. Let's see, actually went on the federal website for the various federally recognized awareness and heritage months, of course, Black History Month being among them. And although, obviously, we as a city council, we have a great diversity in terms of our opinions, and yet, at the same time, I think it's important for us to recognize that if someone from outside takes a look at the city council, on the surface, we appear less diverse than previous councils. So I think it's very important for us to recognize these various awareness and heritage months as they come, and let the public know that we, as a city council, are committed to recognizing Americans of all backgrounds, and committed to being an open and welcoming forum for diversity and inclusion. And for those reasons, I support the city council recognizing Black History Month.
Any questions or comments from members of the council? Councilman Lattiser?
Be added as a sponsor, please.
Yes, and any other members of the city council not yet listed as cosponsors are, of course, welcome to add their names as well. Okay, I see some hands raised. Correct me if I'm wrong, I think that's everyone.
Anyone else have any questions or comments on the resolution? Seeing none, clerk will call the roll.
Yes.
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 Motion passes. Next, we have PCR 23-25, a resolution requesting the General Assembly to consider adopting policies authorizing municipalities to contract with the Rhode Island Department of Transportation to perform minor routine maintenance work on state roads. This is intergovernmental.
Yes, Mr. President, the committee unanimously recommended favorable action.
For action, Councilman Gebhardt?
Move favorable action.
Second.
Motion made and seconded by Councilman Napa. Any further questions or comments on the resolution as proposed? Seeing none, clerk will call the roll. Yes.
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 And then, Councilman Ricks, do you have a motion to reconsider?
Yes. Yes, thank you. So I would move to reconsider strictly for the purpose of the term limit, or period of the term, the appointment of Kelly McElroy, reapportment as municipal court judge, if I may have a second for discussion.
I'll second for discussion.
Councilman Lattiser seconded, so for discussion.
Thank you. I had a discussion with our city council solicitor, and I'll let him read the proposed amendment in the record that would reflect the earlier discussion that we had during committee.
Thank you, Councilman. So Councilman Ricks has moved to reconsider the appointment of, or the reapportment of Kelly McElroy as municipal court judge. The original term proposed here was October 1, 2027. After conferring with the administration, review of statutes, it would be available for all of you to give a full three-year term from tonight. So if the item is approved for reconsideration, we can get to that amendment. So the question right now is, should we bring the item back before us to entertain an amendment? And that's been moved and seconded, so on the reconsideration.
So any questions or comments on the motion to reconsider? Clerk will call the roll.
Clerk will call the roll.
Mr. Sinapi?
Yes.
Mr. DeLuise?
Yes. Foley?
Yes.
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 All right, now the matter stands before us.
Councilman Ricks?
I would move the amendment, and I'll allow the city council solicitor to read it.
Councilman Ricks moves to amend the term expiration date to be February 26 of 2028, as in three years from tonight, as it's not quite midnight yet.
Okay, 26?
February 2, 10, sorry.
Thank you.
Got ahead of myself, that's the next meeting. February 10 of 2028.
Thank you, and...
Second. Motion made and seconded. Is there any further discussion on it? On the amendment?
Thank you. I'll just briefly state that I think that this is, this is a good idea, because it's better for us to have the appointments early into the year, rather than potentially have appointments come up during a so-called lame duck session. Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions or comments on the amendment as proposed? So clerk will call the roll on the amendment?
Yes.
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 All right, now, as amended, is there any further questions or comments? Is there a motion in favor of the, as amended?
Move favorable as amended. Second.
Seconded by Councilman Napa and moved by Councilman Ricks. Any further discussion? Seeing none, clerk will call the roll on the appointment as amended. Yes.
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 Anything for unanimous consent?
If not, councilman void. Docket session?
Since there's no further business in front of the sign of the line, I move the docket second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All against? Any abstentions? All right, we are now in the docket session. Ward one. Ward two.
Pass.
Ward three.
Pass.
Ward four.
Pass.
Ward five.
Pass.
Ward six. I forgot what I meant for five. Seven.
Pass.
Myself, I have one resolution relative to school bonds. Be intergovernmental. And then, ward nine. All right, then we stand adjourned at 10:40 PM.